But wait a couple.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 19th Designer Review Board meeting. First up is roll call.
Board member Ordorio.
Here.
Board member Rosner.
Here.
Board member Milan.
Here.
And Chair Chang.
Here.
And let the record show that Board Member Kim has notified us that she will be slightly late as a return from back to school.
Thank you. And now is oral communications from anyone in the public that wishes to address Designer Review Board for items that are not on this evening's agenda? So if you have anything that is not on this evening's agenda and would like to address this, please come forward. All right, we'll go to the Zoom call and check to see if anybody online has anything they'd like to address the board about for items that aren't on this evening's agenda. Use the raise hand feature at the bottom of the Zoom screen.
I do not have anybody with a raised hand.
All right, thank you. And then we'll go to staff briefing.
I have nothing tonight, Chair.
Moving right along to minutes from the September the 5th Designer Review Board meeting. Is there any comments or corrections on the summary minutes? No? All right, with that, looking for a motion to adopt those minutes.
Motion to adopt the minutes?
And do we have a second? All in favor of adopting minutes from September 5th?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? None. In that we adopt those minutes and move to the first of four public hearings on this evening's agenda. The first one being PH1 801 Tiburon Boulevard. So the way the format works is that the applicant will have 20 minutes to come up and present, at which point we might ask some questions, but we'll also open it up to the public, allow the public to have any comments. The public will be provided three minutes per person. And then after that, the applicant will be provided the opportunity to come back up and address any of the concerns that were raised by the public. With that, I'm ready.
Yeah, great.
You hear me?
Yep.
Chair Chang, Design Review Board members, good evening. My name is JJ Hart, and this is my wife Carrie Hart. We are the owners of 801 Tiburon Boulevard. This is our third design review meeting, and it has been a costly and exhausting process for us. We are seeking your approval of our project. We've showed good faith in the process. We have, we have a competent design team who have provided shadow studies, professional drawings, and proposals that are in line with the town's design guidelines. And we have tried to accommodate our neighbors' concerns. Unfortunately, we've still been met with opposition by both 10 Gil Martin and 835 Tiburon Boulevard after a very reasonable effort to appease their concerns. We feel their continued protest is without merit or proper documentation. Our current design has placed the upper bedroom on the side of the lot originally requested by both contagious properties and recommended by the DRB. It has zero impact on their primary views and casts no shadows on either property. We purchased this property with the dream of building our family home. We understand the Design Review Board is here to uphold the design intentions of the neighborhood, and we appreciate what you do. And hearing your past recommendations, we have taken those points into consideration, and we maintain that the latest design is mindful, respectful of the neighboring homes, and we hope that you will appreciate these efforts. We ask you to give us full approval to move forward with our project. Thank you.
Great. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
We can.
Great. Thank you for the intro, JJ. I'm going to walk you through the changes for this revision. So here we are with the house as it was built in 1952, in the upper left and in the bottom right, the condition that the hearts purchased it in. Here it is in the context of the neighborhood. Here is our material palette. It's a sort of muted, natural tones meant to blend into the hillside and the landscape. And here's an updated rendering with the new revision as seen from the corner of Tiburon and Gil Martin. The house sort of steps back into the site and sits low with the upper volume sort of nested into the hillside and hidden along the mature street trees. Here it is from the front. And to summarize our changes, we've reduced the overall FAR by 245 square feet. We've reduced the upper level square footage by 200 square feet. The partial upper level has been moved towards the slope and the tree line along Gil Martin Boulevard with the glazing on that upper volume substantially reduced. The max height of our roof is reduced by six inches. We removed the media room from the lower level in order to make room for that staircase that goes up to the upper level. And the roof elevations have been adjusted to step down with the slope, adding parapets to screen where the photovoltaics are presumed to be. It's viewed from Gil Martin. Again, we're lucky to have some mature street trees to screen a lot of that mass and from across the street. So I think here are the sort of constraints that we were working within, neighbor view corridors, privacy among properties, setbacks from the main road, and where our driveway is kind of pinned in between a number of street utilities. Existing site plan for the little ranch house, everybody sort of rather liked the existing plan, but the bedrooms along the quiet side. It had the public spaces towards the front and moving the garage to work better with the driveway was an easy move. And then sort of enclosing that middle space as a courtyard is where we landed. So here is the updated floor plan showing the previous revision in red. Removed square footage from the back bedroom and widened the family room to accommodate that staircase. And the upper level with the primary bedroom and an outdoor deck. As you can see, the primary glazing is view facing towards the west and the water with the larger glazing inside the bedrooms facing that tree line. Clear story windows on the back with a sill height of seven feet, and then one window facing south in a stairwell. The elevation is seen from Gil Martin, showing those windows on the upper volume, which will be in the treetops, the garage, the front door, and where the future ADU will be. And red, you can see where the upper volume was in our revision two. Here it is from the front. Dashed in blue is the existing roof line. So you can see that the new roof line towards the front of the house is actually lower than the existing modest ranch. And in the back, you see that upper volume. This is our south elevation along the fence line. Again, you can see that we're lower than the existing ridge. We're dropping the interior floor height so that we no longer have privacy issues along that fence line. And then at the back, we have only clear story windows in that bedroom. Garden view windows on the lower bedroom in the back and clear story windows on the upper bedroom there. It's a section showing the bedroom wing, how we're sort of stepping up towards the back and then down towards the front. You can see the relationship to the hillside. We're trying not to retain too much at the back and utilize the sort of central flat portion of the lot. Here is a cut through the second level. And we're I think about 10 feet higher than the existing garage and taking up about the same footprint. Cross section showing those bedrooms and the relationship to the courtyard. The revised story pole, so taken from Gil Martin Boulevard, the upper volume is primarily masked by these mature trees. Some of these will be removed or pruned, but for the most part, the vegetation is going to remain thick. Here it is from the front, showing the relationship of the new roof line to the existing. Okay, now getting into the setback, there had been some discussion at the last meeting about maybe adjusting the front setback. We'd set it at about 60, which we found to be the average and sort of in pattern with the neighborhood. And looking at that again and examining the options, we decided to maintain that. One of the reasons is the garage and where it lands in the flat portion of the site. We can't really pull it back too much or forward too much without having to drop the elevations of the house, given the slope of Gil Martin. Another issue that came up was noise. So the traffic along Gil Martin Boulevard is about 40 miles per hour. So at the source of that sound, it is almost harmful. As you're 20 feet away, it's closer to standing next to a vacuum cleaner. And where we have it, 100 feet from the source, which is a 60-foot setback. Now you're at normal conversation level, but still 20 decibels away from what the average home noise would want to be. Another issue with the front setback and changing that is privacy. So this is the view looking at the house from Tiburon Boulevard with the 60 feet. Here it is if we reduce it to 40. Here it is if we lift the finished floor two feet. And so basically, what we're doing if we pull it forward and up is putting the contents on display and passersby would know what color slippers my clients are wearing in the morning. So with that in mind, we decided to keep the house at the elevation that gives them the most privacy and views, and also keeps the height overall low enough that we're not impacting any of the neighbors' view corridors. So here it is in the section. Again, you can see we're sort of trying to sit in the flatter portion, and we're using the front yard as our primary outdoor space, given that the backyard is a steeper slope. So looking at trying to make the house all on level. Again, with that front constraint and the driveway constraint and the slope in the back, if we detach the ADU, it ends up sort of sitting either into the hillside or on the hillside, putting it closer to the neighbors behind. If we put an upper level over the garage, it's in that view corridor from the closet loft at 835. If we put it over the garage, it's not in that view corridor, which seemed to be of concern. So now that is where we've landed. It also is no longer in front of the gazebo or in line with that. Here we are looking at two stories in the neighborhood. So examining the sort of ratio along Tiburon Boulevard, we found a pretty even split of one to two stories. Zooming out and looking at the broader context, it was heavily biased towards two-story with some of the newer ones being three-story. I should note that primarily the one stories were original houses from the 50s, like my client's house. Here it is in the context, sort of sitting low in the middle with all the lawn. Okay, looking at it from 10 Gil Martin. So we have their gazebo up above. I think there was some argument as to whether or not that's protected view because it's an accessory structure and not a primary space. Still, we found that the location of the new upper volume was not a blockage to that, and it was a much better solution than where we would be sitting an ADU if it had to break off of the house and move back. This is where the massing sits in from aerial view. We have the sort of pink box here showing that upper level, and it's approximately the exact footprint of the garage. It's a little bit maybe fatter on some edges and about 10 feet taller. There it is, sort of a quick model view to get the idea of those heights. So knowing what we know from our previous examination, this roof line will not be visible from the dining room, the kitchen, the bedroom patio, the bedroom, or the dining patio. Looking at it from the primary living patio, it would be below the vegetation and far below the railing line. You can kind of see it in the rendering under the sort of rendered palm. There's a little bit, but it does not interrupt the water line or the primary view. And then from inside the living room, it is doubtfully visible at all. Looking at the views from 835 Tiburon, we have the view from the closet loft looking straight forward. View towards TAM submitted by the owners. We've recreated that with the GIS topo data and some survey points, and this is the existing view. And this is the improved view with our new revision showing a lower, flatter roof line that now opens that view up more. And with the upper volume being pushed towards Gil Martin and the slope, it is no longer in that corridor. Showing how wide that corridor is now over my client's property. Another condition that's improved is again the finished floor height. So this is the existing condition from the bedrooms at 801, looking down towards 835. With us lowering this finished floor, it's closer to the finished floor next door and reduces this sightline by about two feet. This is the fence line. In most places, it's heavily vegetated and private, but still it's an improvement to have a lower floor height along that line. This is showing the rear bedroom, and the only windows along that fence line are clear story, so their head height is still four and a half feet underneath that story pole line. So it is clearly well into the vegetation and not visible from a clear story across the fence. Here's that relationship as best we can understand it, given the heights we have. So clear story to clear story, it's kind of two private conditions. And then our lower bedroom condition now with the lowered floor height, no longer looking down into the neighbors' bedroom windows. From what they submitted, I guess we can also deem that they see the top of the parapet on the lower bedroom and none of the clear story windows. And they would only see one window above, and that is a stairwell. Shadow studies showing the conditions, the upper volume at no point in the year has a shadow, and given that our new volumes are lower than the existing, if anything, shadow conditions would likely be improved. So again, summary of the changes, lowered FAR by 245 square feet, upper store reduced by 120, overall roof reduced, and the upper volume is pushed back. And I'm going to save a couple of minutes for Rondi to tell us about the landscape since it's been a little bit of time for some people.
I'm Rondi Johnson. I'm the landscape designer for this project. And just to quickly walk you through the landscape concept, we've got native drought tolerant plants, just like the architecture, very muted, natural, warm palette. Right now, the site is very overgrown with a lot of the original trees and brush from years of neglect. So our clients will absolutely clear the understory that you see on Gil Martin. We intend to keep the native oaks on Gil Martin, but we can absolutely open and prune and do aesthetic pruning and maintenance on those trees, though we want to remove any topped trees that are nestled in that really dense existing tree, tree line along Gil Martin. Next slide. All of the new planting is really tidy and linear, clean, low water. We have tried to maintain open views for our clients and our neighbors on either side. We've kept a clear visibility buffer for street traffic. You see the dark dashed line along Tiburon there. And then there's also a 35-foot visibility buffer along the corner, keeping all plants low in that area. So motorists and pedestrians and neighbors can see across that corner. We've pulled the fence back at that corner and given it a rounded radius curve there to keep it clear of the visibility issues in that area. We've removed our fence variance. We had asked for a taller fence previously, but we're keeping six-foot-high fences everywhere. Constant pitches on the side along the side property lines and level across the front for a clean appearance along Tiburon Boulevard. Next slide. The backyard is much steeper. We have low plantings all along the back and hedges that can be kept low. Existing fence to remain on the back side, new fences on the Gil Martin and on the south side as well. Next line. And here you can see some quick elevations showing the style of the fence. The fence, while it's a privacy fence, it does have an open picket design. So there is a gap between fence boards that should allow a little view of light and vegetation, however slight, through that fence, so it's not going to look like a solid wall. Next slide. And here's views both through the pool in the front yard and at the backyard, looking back at that back fence up Tiburon Boulevard, where you can see our intention is to keep vegetation low, keep trees low, and simply maintain and improve the existing oaks along the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anybody else who was going to present?
No.
All right, excellent. Thank you. All right, with that, we are going to open it up to the public. So if you're here and would like to come forward, please come up to the microphone in the center. If you could state your name and address for the record, and we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, please.
Good evening. My name is Carl Weichel, and my wife and I own the adjacent property 835 Tiburon Boulevard. And we've seen quite an improvement from where we first started on the first round. And we do endorse this design, especially removing that towering canyon effect that affected us dramatically. And with it in the back, I think it's acceptable from our viewpoint. And I do want to compliment, foresee the town of Tiburon Planning Department that allowed us to ask numerous questions, and rather than just sending us links to codes, they did narrative to help us understand it, as well as the Design Review Board, and I think it was you, Mr. Moffett, who suggested they follow the natural landscaping going up the hill that coincidentally our house has. So we're pleased with the design. However, we do have some interests that we want to preserve, that we've written about, and we put photos, which I can't show you here, but I do want to go over that. We request confirmation that the trees and shrubs being planted behind their fence along the southwest property line from the end of their new front porch to Tiburon Boulevard are not permitted to exceed six feet in height. If it grows more than six feet, it would significantly obstruct our height, our view. We currently have a beautiful unobstructed view of Mount Tam and the Northern Bay. We understand that they can erect a six-foot fence surrounding the property, but planting tall trees for their personal privacy is an intrusion of the view ordinance and our enjoyment and seed the plants. So that's what we're requesting, that we can always maintain that privilege that growing plants are obstructing beyond the fence. Secondly, the plans show adding landfill to raise the base height that considerably needs exceeds the current topography. We want assurance that the six-foot fence is measured from the current level now and not from the raised level, which would further block our view. And we're talking about at the patio going out where the proposed swimming pool may be at one stage. Number three, we want to retain some of the trees and vegetation along our property line to help block the view of their structure and fence. We ask that the owner developer please meet with us to determine the property line, and we agree mutually which vegetation is to be removed and which is to stay. We also request that the windows facing the southwest side on their second story in the rear be frosted rather than transparent to reduce nighttime glare. We also request that the rear five windows on the first floor be frosted. The windows face our master bedroom, and the frosting would reduce the brightness of the lights after dark, as well as protect our privacy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public that wishes to speak on this project?
My name is Frank Romani, and together with my wife Sally Sadie and our boys, we are the owners of 10 Gil Martin Drive, which is contiguous to the proposed development 801 Tiburon Boulevard. And I share what Mr. Hart is saying about this being an exhausting process. Yes, this is the third time we've been to this, but we feel strong enough that we're here. And yes, it was back to school, and we left early to be here for that as well. So obviously, we feel strong enough. There is, we agree there's significant improvements made to the property. The improvements all along, including the fact that they moved the proposed second floor to the other side closer to Gil Martin. That said, we still have some significant concerns. One is the height of the proposed second floor. From what we can see is the ceiling that they're using is a 10-foot ceiling. We remodeled our place, and we have new bedrooms in there, and our ceiling is eight foot. So I don't know why you need a 10-foot ceiling. Also, from what we can tell is there is a vertical extended fascia that goes above the story poles. The pictures that were shown earlier that you saw, those are interesting pictures because if you're actually on the property and you're in the gazebo and you look out, you can absolutely see that there is no question that there is blockage of the views of the water. You can absolutely see that. There's blockage from the greens, and you can see there's blockage from the water. It's not 100% obstructing everything, thankfully, but it's significantly obstructing the view of the water. You could see that. And it could be maybe two things. One is the proposed height, again, 10 foot plus the glacier, the fascia that does not even reflect in the proposed plans. The other thing is that they have certain items that I think our other neighbors have raised as well, such as putting in new trees. The current, if you look at the property, the current state of the affairs of the trees, they have been absolutely neglected over the last four years since the last owner, Ruth, passed away in there. She was very good about trimming our trees. We also trim our trees when our neighbors bring it to our attention. It's a very neighborly thing to do, and we pay for it. And we raised this to Mr. Hart's attention. It has not been done. Hopefully, given the assurances, the trees will be maintained, but that also gives us a little bit of a lack of trust, if you want to call it that, and concern that the new proposed trees that are going to be placed are also going to be neglected. So now you have existing trees that have been neglected and a bunch of new trees that you're going to place on both sides, and you're going to get above the six-foot level. That's not acceptable because that's just not. And again, if there was maintenance of the existing trees, maybe that would have been, we would have seen through that, and we would have accepted the proposal. The other items are the proposed windows on the second floor. We share our other neighbors' views that there should be proper blazing or whatever you want to call it there, so that it's
We're in three minutes, so if we just wrap it up.
Yeah, absolutely. So those are the main concerns. Also, there's a proposed yoga in the back. We just want to make sure that does not end up being an office or something as an enclosed structure. Okay? Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you. Anybody else that wishes to speak?
I'm Sally Sadie, and my husband Frank Romani just spoke, owner of 10 Gil Martin Drive. I just wanted to add a couple of things to what my husband stated was that there are hillside guidelines to reduce bulking and mass, and there's just too much bulking of that second story. It's just too much bulk, too much mass there. It's just too big. I mean, overall, like I echo the sentiments of my husband, but even still, like the second story is just too obstructive, too much. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else that wishes to speak? Just come up.
Hi, my name is Meredith Rolfe. I live at some of 9 Tiburon Boulevard most of the year, some of the year. We also live in Sacramento. And I just wanted to say I've gotten to know JJ and his team. They're great people, were very responsive to our requests. And I love the design that they've got this time. I think this is really a really good one. That's all.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, we'll go to the Zoom call. Is there anybody online that wishes to speak on this project? If you
There's no one with their hand raised.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, we'll close the public portion, bring it up back to the applicant to address any of the concerns that were raised. Maybe before we do, is there any questions that I forgot to ask questions if you might have any for the applicant initially? All right, come on.
So I just wanted to address the trees. I know that's not part of the design review process, but it's something that we've actually spoke with our arborist about. There is some live oaks there, and he's made it quite clear to me that you cannot trim them more than 18 inches. That's out of time to preserve them. That's as much as you can do. And we do intend to maintain our trees and the rest of our, obviously, we're spending a lot of money on our landscaping. We don't intend to just let it go wild. Lastly, you know, as far as views go, we've really exhausted what we can do here. And all we want is, the same as the neighbors that just spoke, we want to be able to enjoy the views from our master bedroom, our kitchen, and our living room. we want to be able to enjoy the views from our master bedroom, our kitchen, and our living room. And I think that's not asking a lot. So, and thanks for your time.
All right, thanks. Might have some questions for your architect?
I think Rondi's going to address the fence height concern.
Did you have a specific question?
Yeah, about the planting along the south edge and along Gil Martin and the back edge. The new planting, what is, I don't know these species very well, so what's their kind of maximum height?
Sure. Colleen, can you show the planting plan on the screen? Is that possible?
Can I share it? Yes, I can.
Oh, great, thank you. Front or back is fine. This is great. We'll start in the front. So in the front, you see the dark double line is the fence there. And there's a L O.
There is a pointer that you could use right there.
Thank you, thank you.
That might make it easier for you. Just turn it on.
All of the, thank you, just press the light button. Okay, all of, sorry, disappears on the screen. Disappears a little on the screen. Anyway, all of the shrubs marked L O there that you see, those are all evergreen hedge shrubs that can be maintained at any height. So they can grow higher than the six-foot fence, but my clients want to be able to see over that fence, and they want to see the view, so our intention is to keep them at fence height on the south side. See if that works. There we go. Yeah, these guys here. So the intention is to maintain all these plants at fence height, and nothing in this area can exceed, I think it's thirty inches or something like that for visibility. Same on this side, we have evergreen hedge plants that can be maintained at any height. And if you can scroll a little to show the south side, there we go. This is a non-invasive bamboo that can also be maintained at fence height. My personal desire would be to let it go a few feet higher than the fence, so it softens that fence line. And there is a new tree here, and these dashed lines on the plans show all of the neighbors' existing trees to remain. So we have no intention of cutting into any of the neighbors' trees.
What is the maximum height that the bamboo, the non-invasive bamboo would achieve?
I believe that one's twelve to fifteen feet, if it was left to just to grow.
And then what about the tree, the new planting of that tree?
This one? Let me see what that is. Sorry, one moment. That one is an Escalus Californica. That's a native California buckeye. It's considered a large shrub slash small tree, and those usually get to about fifteen feet tall. So roughly, this whole fence line is in the ballpark if you did nothing to the bamboo of twelve feet in height. And initially, we were under the impression that privacy was very important to neighbors here as well. So we wanted to create privacy for both sides with that bamboo. However, that can be maintained at any height.
How quickly does that bamboo grow annually?
I don't know the growth rate, but it is a fast grower, but it's not an invasive bamboo. There's running bamboos and clumping bamboos, so it's actually a slow-growing bamboo.
Could you also walk us to the adjoining plan?
Sure, to the backyard plan, if whoever is, there we go, there's the backyard. Okay, so here on the top of the screen, you see all of these dashed lines. Those are all of our existing street trees to remain. Now, our intention is to clear that understory, as I mentioned before, clear out anything that's dead, dying, topped in that area, but keep the coast live oaks that are there. And that is going to do a job to screen this whole portion of the property from the road for both sides. So our intention is to keep these oaks, but as JJ said, you can't, no arborist in the world thinks topping trees is a good idea, but we can absolutely maintain them to a degree that is healthy for those native oaks and open their canopies and keep them tidy. This is also here. This is a ligustrum. This is an evergreen hedge plant that's meant to be at fence height. And these are our neighbors' trees. There's some tall palms and tropicals. I think maybe birds of paradise or something like that. There's quite tall vegetation there already up slope from us. These are the buckeyes that are the native California shrub, large shrub slash small tree. Those get to about fifteen feet tall. They're planted down at elevation, I'd say twenty-eight. And this fence here is, top of fence is probably at about forty-five, forty-six. So when these trees decades from now are at full maturity, they are very far down slope and would probably barely graze the top of this fence elevation, given how steep this slope is here.
Could you also go through the fence and height and how the datum is established to the six feet?
Yeah, so let's see, if we could go to the grading plans, which are the three series drawings, sorry, I think it's before these.
Oh, this is a partial set, so hold on one second.
Three oh oh, I think they are the sheet numbers.
May I just pull up the
Yeah, here's the grading plan. So the fences are delineated on the grading plan, and we have grades all along all fence lines, and then, sorry to have you bounce around, but if you could go back to the six series, that, those detail sheets that show the whole fence in elevation, six oh oh, six oh one, those drawings, I'll show you the fences.
Sorry, there's a little lag on the computer.
No problem. I appreciate you jumping all around. We had initially asked for a higher fence in the front. Once we get to the
And we, just confirming that you're not asking
We are not asking for it. Our drawings are, say, six feet max, not to exceed six feet for the fence. I have, I want to try and get a constant pitch as well as I can here. And then, at this point, we level out to a six-foot-high fence here that runs straight along. This is Tiburon, this is Gil Martin, so it's to be six feet all along here. And again, these are open pickets. It's not a solid fence.
What do you mean by open picket? What's the
The fence boards themselves are, have a gap of a half inch or so between them. So you would see air between fence boards. They're not abutted end to end, like a privacy fence.
So nominal boards of
So I think we have two-by-twos on the drawings and a half-inch gap between them. So you would get that light coming between the fence all the way around the whole property.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, good.
I'm concerned, I'm concerned about the buckeye next to the swimming pool. It appears to be right in the sightline of your neighbor view of the, view of the bay.
We have a large, there's a large tree there. I don't know if we have the, any images of the existing property. Can we show an image, Colleen, or whoever is running the show here?
I don't have control, but do you want like an older street view?
Just so we could see the neighbors' trees that are right there in that area. That tree is meant to nestle in among some other mature trees.
I think, I think if you go to the cover page.
The cover page might show it for us. Thank you for that. Yeah, so you'll see there's a large mass of existing trees.
Sorry.
All right, no problem. Right here.
Those trees are undercut. You can see the view under the bottom branches, whereas your buckeye is growing up into that space, so you're going to be including the view.
Yeah, though that tree could also be maintained with an open trunk, and the canopy could be kept high as well, if that's something that we need to consider.
I think Suzanne asked, but I didn't hear the answer, like, on the page where you're doing some grading to get the fence on the Tiburon Boulevard's level, like, about how much are you filling in? Is it like six inches?
Can we go to the grading plan? Or, excuse me, sorry, the section will probably show up better. The six oh oh or six oh one are the long sections of the front of the property. Thank you so much.
Yeah, of course. It's a little slow, so.
No problem. And I don't believe I can tell you exact, I can't tell you exact amounts of cut and fill, but I can talk about what our design intent is here. Let's see, if we could scroll down to show one of those long sections that cuts through the pool and the fence along Tiburon Boulevard. One more, and then, let's see, one more. There we go, right here. So right now, existing, this is Tiburon Boulevard down here, and right now, existing grade does something like this, where it's a long gradual slope, sorry, carry up to the finished floor up here at about elevation twenty-four, and then the grade kind of runs like this. So we're trying to balance cut and fill and give our clients a space where they can occupy. So we have this level artificial turf here, and then we have, then we've taken a steep slope down, back down to the street. So because the slope is so steep, there is concrete at the base of the fence, but the intent is that that fence is only six feet high. So that is merely to reinforce that slope and keep it looking tidy, because we are going up at, you know, maybe twenty-five, thirty percent there, and that can erode over time. So this is meant to give the clients a nice tidy edge to their artificial turf, and then a tidy edge facing the road. And then this is a pool, so this actually gets deeply, deeply excavated here, and then the spoils could be located here and under the pool deck.
Okay, thank you.
Can the city clarify where the six-foot datum establishes? Is it the pre-cut or the post-cut line?
It's whichever line is lower. So if there is any change in grade, we would be measuring it from the lower of those two. And it can't be, so if there's cut, this is not a good example, but we would measure six feet from that existing or finished, whichever is lower, up to six feet and no more.
Okay.
One more question. If you look at that section, I believe it's the one on page six oh two, this is, this shows your bamboo going up and forming a virtually impenetrable wall all along the south property line.
These are, these trees here are olive trees, and they're along Gil Martin.
You're looking at different, it was a bamboo.
Yes, in the rendering, initially, it was my understanding, our initial brief was to give privacy to both sides. So if that is no longer what the neighbors' desire on that side, that bamboo can be maintained lower.
Well, effectively, you're taking half of their water view away by doing that. So I would strongly disagree with the idea of putting a constant row of bamboo there. Put something that can be hedged at approximately the fence height. Okay.
Is, is there any other questions?
I did the, on the height of the second floor, can we bring that up? The, it's a ten-foot height right now. Is there any reason it couldn't be nine?
I'll let Colleen speak to that, since I'm the landscape designer. She's on Zoom. There she is.
Hi, the primary reason was that the spaces were smaller, and we wanted them to still feel generous, that there was narrow in width, so we went with ten, but it could be reduced to nine.
Any other questions?
One more, one more question. The parapet you have going around the entire house, there's a two-foot-wide parapet at the exterior edge of the roof, and I'm just wondering why you chose that.
You mean an overhang or a parapet?
A parapet. There's a, the fascia is enlarged to three, two to three feet.
At the ground level, the overhang is, it's a generous overhang. It's an aesthetic choice.
But on the second floor?
Oh, on the second floor. Oh, that parapet is only at the two rear volumes, and that's to obscure the PV arrays that we assume will be there.
I'm sorry, to what?
To obscure the photovoltaics. To screen them from view. Otherwise, without that edge, they're more exposed to the neighbors and the street. Sort of meeting up the roof line.
Can you show us that? I'm not sure. I read about that, but I'm not sure I understood what
On the sheet A three point one, there's a section on the upper piece of the page, and you'll notice sort of an increase in height of both of the floor of the roof structure.
Yeah. I can't use the pointer, but on that upper volume, it is where the PVs will most likely be placed. And so it just seems like a nice way to screen it, so that you're not seeing, not seeing those edges from the street. And then on the lower volume, the same thing. Given that we're not entirely sure what size and shape the array will take, it was safe to assume that they would work better on the higher volumes.
One would assume that it would be less, add less height to the building on the lower volumes, obviously.
The photovoltaics, they would be more visible to everyone.
All right, is there any other questions? All right, all right, with that, thank you. We will close it to, close it to the public and bring it back to the board. Would anybody like to lead us off?
I'll start off with a couple of brief comments. I think the volume is in the right place now. And it really does mold in with the, respect the hillside guidelines. I think, I think we can use nine-foot, you know, finished floor ceiling in the second volume, in the top volume. I think I could support that, and reducing I think reducing the plants or putting, can we do a restriction on the plants? Or we can just say, pick a species so that's easier to maintain at the fence site? I don't know how to, I don't know how to articulate that without, I don't know what we're allowed to say.
I mean, there is, there is a definition of an undesirable plant, which is three feet growth per year, but I think it also conditions that it expected thirty feet maturity.
I've never met a non-invasive bamboo in my life, but
Is there any reason you can't put a restriction of new plant life at six feet and maintain current plants?
It has to be maintained at the elevation of the fence site.
Yeah, is there? I think that'd be a good recommendation, and I also definitely like the idea of lowering the second story by a foot.
Yeah, I think, I think by taking that fascia off the effectively, the roof goes out, and then it has a little wall on it that looks to be about two feet high. If you take that off and drop the ceiling height to nine feet, you've lowered the building.
Yeah, I
Yeah, you don't interfere with the view at all.
Yeah, I think the screening of the PV is not
Yeah, just so we collect everybody's kind of comments systematically. So Suzanne was going, you were maybe like, just we'll go through one person at a time, make sure we capture everything, and then comment on what was said before.
So my comment had to do with the I don't, I'm agnostic what species it is, although bamboo, I've never heard of, is not invasive. And the second thing is lowering the finished height of the ceiling and the second story volume to nine feet instead of ten feet, and then lowering the parapet. I don't mind the parapet. It's a huge parapet. So even like something modest, you know, like six inches.
It's an unnecessary appendage, so.
Yeah. No, that's all.
Okay, thanks.
My thoughts were exactly the same, that you don't have any new plantings that exceed six feet, and that the upper storage, bring that down to nine feet. And I would leave that up to the architects as to how they want to do that.
I agree with that. Those are the primary points I had. The other thing is just The other thing is just, as a neighbor, you should probably work out an agreement at this point in time to prune, prune trees so that they are kept at a reasonable height all during construction, and you're, you're going to be there for two years building this thing, so.
So we have to be careful with that, because we should not be regulating the maintenance of people's landscaping. You can pick a species.
I stand corrected.
Thank you.
Go ahead and let it grow like crazy.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Jim, I think the point is that we have the ability to specify the species that would then kind of determine the long-term height of the plant, but not necessarily to, like, after we leave here, it's, it's kind of on its own, so.
Can we specify a species and be agnostic with the species? Say, pick a species that's slow growing.
Yes, we, yes, you can do that.
Okay.
And I, I think that would, a, a different species would be applied to that buckeye you're proposing next to the swimming pool. That, that'll be right in the view plan. But other than that, I think the, the, the overall massing is, is much better than it was before. I don't have a problem putting the, the solar panels on the lower level. Lower level, upper level, it doesn't make much difference. They now go on flat roofs, so you don't have to, don't have to tilt them up or anything.
I'm back at the buckeye, because I think disagree on it. I guess I might be in the minority here, I think there's, I, for me, we kind of moved a, kind of a view, a minor view problem for ten Gil Martin to more like a, a massing problem. I, I, I find that there's still quite a bit of mass there when you're out on the, the, let's call it, it, it's an outdoor living area, it's not a gazebo, it's a, it's part of the pool, it's, it's their, really, I think, m- majority of their outdoor, you know, living space. And I struggle a little bit with the, you know, we're in this gray area of this balance of, you know, trying to, you know, allow the applicant to, you know, achieve the, as much of the program that they want with, you know, any adverse effects with the neighbors, and I'm still finding that there's quite a, quite an impact for the uphill neighbor with that, with that second story. A foot would be great, I don't know if that, if that really makes a difference.
Talking three feet, though.
I, I think the story pole, are the story poles to the parapet or to the, to the?
They would have to go to the parapet, I mean, they can't, it's part of the building structure, so I'm pretty sure that they go to the top of the parapet.
Goes to top of the parapet.
So you would be taking, say, put an half or two feet off the parapet, and then another foot off the overall height, so it'd be about two and a half feet, maybe.
I think that, I, I mean, I think that makes a difference, I think that, you know, and, and I, I said this before, I think I was in the minority on the, the last round, where I think Jim and I were the only ones enter, would entertain a second level, I think the three of you were a bit more pushing towards first level, and, and one of my arguments was, at least for that, that first view blockages, if you're, if you're standing and you're walking around, you, you noticed it, but when you sit down in the couch, you didn't see it. And that's still the case here, whi- which is, which is, I think, a positive, right? For when you're sitting down in that couch, you have that hedge, and you don't see the existing story poles. So I, I, I could, I could get behind, you know, a, a three-foot reduction in, in overall height, I think that would help with the massing a bit.
With the second story?
Of the second story.
It's, it's not that difficult.
Of the, this is tricky. I, I would say the, of the, the to- the top elevation coming in three feet, and leave it to however they want to do it. And they have a structure underneath that, where we, we don't comment, but, you know, there's, I would be, you know, bringing the overall elevation down from, I think it was like forty-eight something to forty-three, or forty-five and a half, there's this number that we can specify, I think. If they wanted a bigger, if they wanted a taller, you know, bedroom versus other, the, the lower level, but.
Yeah, there's, there's easily three feet of, of vertical motion that you can take out of it if you want to dig some, dig some dirt, which is very inexpensive.
Yeah, I'm in agreement, yeah, yeah.
So, you know, I, my, my com- my comment, so I, I didn't, I wasn't here at the June meeting, right? So, you know, the, I, I'm kind of seeing it from the very first meeting to this meeting. And what I've seen is like, you know, what's the old, you don't ever see your kids grow, you don't see your hair grow, whatever, right? For me, it's a pretty incredible jump from where it was the first meeting. I was, you know, absolutely against it, it caused too much impact on eight thirty-five and ten Gil Martin. What I wanted to see was a, a one-story with maybe a higher floor, floor heights or something like that. But I did say to myself, like, hey, if, if there was a two-story design, like, what would it have to look like in order to get behind it? And for me, it was move it over to Gil Martin, and then pull it, pull it further back out of the view. And for me, this does exactly that. And so going back out there today, you know, it's, you know, the, the top of, of that story still doesn't come above the elevate, or it comes right up to the elevation of essentially the bottom of that outdoor living space. And I think that the outdoor living, yeah, I mean, I, I went up to the fence line and looked over and could see exactly the two flags lined up. So it's, it's, you know, you're, you're above it, so you're looking essentially down on it with that view. So, you know, the, you know, outdoor living, I, I, I totally get that that's a place that's commonly used, right? You know, I, I think that when we talk about primary views, you know, as it's laid out, is like, hey, primary view is, you know, from your living room or whatever, it's not from your back bedroom, looking out the rear window or something like that, and, and protecting that view. You know, I think it sets a, you know, are we saying that, like, hey, you can build any outdoor space to be an outdoor living area, and that becomes a, you know, something that needs to really protect the view? And, and that's, I guess, the challenge for me. And, you know, when it comes down to like the nine-foot versus ten-foot, I'm absolutely supportive of ten feet. Like, if we're gonna support it, like, I have nine-foot ceilings in my home, not a day goes by that I wish I didn't have an extra, you know, foot to the ceiling. I, I don't think, I don't think ten is an obscene amount, like, in, you know, nineteen-sixties ranch homes, like, eight-foot I get was the standard. I feel like ten feet, especially for a master bedroom in a nice house in Tiburon, is, is, you know, we see proposals for, for twelve and fourteen feet, and we ask them to bring it down, like, uh, ten feet is, is totally fine with me. And I, and I guess I look at, like, the benefit of the applicant and the extra, you know, foot in a master bedroom versus, you know, what it really does improve for a view from a outdoor living space. And I, I probably tend to side more toward, you know, the benefit for the applicant. I do share some of the same concerns about the bamboo. I think that having something that doesn't exceed fence height would be helpful. If the neighbor wants the privacy, they could just easily plant bamboo on their side of the fence and, you know, grow it up to create the exact same effect if that was, if that was desired. I'm sorry, I thought about the, the neighbor at, at eight thirty-five. So, yeah, I guess I'm, I'm, and then from a, the parapet standpoint, like, I, I think it's a beautiful design, and so I, I think that there was a, a design and aesthetic reason for the, the thicknesses of those hang, overhangs. So, yeah, so I, I guess, again, not seeing the middle application and spending a lot of time in the last meeting, I'm seeing what feels like a very dramatic change, that was a lot of work that was done by both the design team and the applicant to get to a, a much better, definitely a lot better for the next-door neighbor at eight thirty-five, and, and I think a, a significant improvement for, for ten Gil Martin compared to the original application.
I, I really want to support what you said there, I mean, about the, about setting a precedent. You know, if everyone applicant comes in and says, well, if I sit here on my back patio, you can't build it because I'm gonna see it. I mean, we're, we're, that unleashes a whole slew of things. There is another part of the backyard where they have pretty good views of, you know, what's going on out there, so.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just real quick.
In the hillside guidelines, talk about the primary views from primary spaces.
First, so, so for me, there's two separate things. I'll just address that real quick. My issue is more the massing, it's not, it's not necessarily the view blockage, it is the impact of the massing in, just, just generally, and fro- from the adjoining neighbor, i- it's, i- it's more that. The cha- careful with the, like, I don't think we should be assessing, I don't think we should have a, be necessarily assessing, oh, the, the change was so dramatic. I mean, you, you could go from a, I'm not saying this is the, the case, but if, if someone comes in with a completely ludicrous design, and then they make it, you know, still ludicrous, but not as, like, yeah, and I wouldn't talk about relative, I think we need to assess the project.
The original design was also not a full two-story with like four bedrooms on top. The original design was a master bedroom, just located in what I felt like was a much more intrusive area than where it is now.
Yeah, that's a, that's a characterization, I just want to be careful about.
The original proposal was still like, I, I think, an attempt, right? Again, not necessarily in the right spot, but an attempt to, to not just do an entire second story across the entire, entire top.
And I appreciate what you're saying, instead of being prescriptive, saying you're gonna lower the ceiling by a foot. I, I, I can see your point, and I, I agree with you. Take down a little bit, we're not gonna tell you how to do it, but maybe take off a foot or two from the entire height, I mean, maybe you won't support that, but I, I don't want to be prescriptive and say, that's where it should come from. I, I think I can see that.
So, like, I, I, and I, and I would be more supportive, like, okay, if it's like one foot, but then leave it to the,
Yeah, yeah.
Figure out where that comes out of.
Yeah.
I, I think it's so easy to take two or three feet off of this building and still have the same building, but reduce the mass and reduce the height, and increase the, 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 increase the views from the neighboring house. I, I don't see why we shouldn't do it. If it were a difficult job, that'd be one thing, but this is not. This is, this is just a basic building decision.
They are upgrading quite a bit.
And, and also, I mean, I, I'm just looking at this, like, the, the back deck in the, you know, you're gonna be staring, that to me makes no sense, because you're now like literally staring at that mass, the, the deck in their backyard. So I, I think there's, there's, there's been, there back, the.
Who's gonna be staring at whom?
The back deck of the applicant, they're building a back deck uphill, that's below the gazebo, right?
Yeah.
And it's just like.
I mean, it's, sorry, we.
Sorry, we can't. Unless it's not a deck, I'm, this, yeah, the E P deck right here on L one oh one, right? It'd be, right, it's below the gazebo.
I mean, it's a disadvantage of the new homeowner or not.
That's what I'm saying, no, no, I'm, I'm saying, I'm just saying that's reducing the, the building heights generally. I think is, is what Jim was saying, and there's a lot of.
But it's, yeah, I mean, like, the deck, I, I, I'm not sure what, like, for me, that's not a consideration, because let's just say it was flipped the other way, and this house had gotten developed first, and there was a deck there, and that person was like, we spend all of our time on this deck, and now you're trying to put a gazebo and a lower living space on, on your house, on, for the uphill neighbor, right? Or, or I guess.
Oh, no, 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 I was just saying, I, I was just saying, as, if that was, I was saying, as the applicant, is there a deck, yeah, it's, it's just a weird deck for, it is going to make that deck, in my opinion, more, you know, better, because if we're bringing down the height of that mass three feet, I'm just saying it as an example, forget it, then.
Yeah.
It was a side comment that was just, we're getting real.
I mean, I guess, you, you, the picture that you had, that, that you had up, like, I guess for me, like, pulling a foot or two, doesn't really, you're gonna see what, a little bit more tree over the top. For you, I guess it's massing, not necessarily view blockage, and for me, it's.
Lower part of the house.
It's.
It's the upper part of the house.
There's the upper part.
Yeah.
Brian, there's, you know, the, the height and the mass of, especially of a front row of houses on Tiburon Boulevard, I mean, these are nineteen fifty homes that are single-story that are, have been changed, quite a few of them, but that, maybe that isn't the place where Tiburon needs a ten, eleven, twelve-foot second-story bedroom. And I think that's the thing, is that, take that mass down, and the ceiling height down, doesn't change their view at all, and allows for the neighborhood to exactly have that, have more view and less mass, both on the road and out of these homes that surround the area.
Yeah, I mean, from a, from a curb appeal, still standpoint, from a curb appeal standpoint of Tiburon Boulevard, like, I, I think the train left the building for large houses along Tib- the front of Tiburon Boulevard, like, as far as two stories and that. So, and, and the fact that this, this, the, the second story is cited as about as far away as you can get, like, I, I guess, for me, that, that's not too much of a consideration, at least the view from Tiburon Boulevard. Like, when I, I drive by there every day, and, you know, the story poles have not really popped out, it's like, oh, you know, there's some, some story poles you drive by, and you're like, oh my gosh, that's, that's gonna be a big house there. Like, those story poles are so tucked back in there that it's, it doesn't really, it's not something I see every single time I go up and down Tiburon Boulevard.
I mean, it sounds like there's kind of a consensus, maybe we should go through each item and like, south side species, I mean, are we okay with it species? Or I think we should pick a species, like, bamboo is not manageable.
I don't think we pick.
Something like legustrum would be.
I, I don't think we pick a species, I, I think we.
We direct, like, a different species as a, that, that is much more containable at that height?
I mean, I, I think that, like, basically the applicant could work with staffed for a species that would be a species that wouldn't grow, you know, above six, that would be, I, I don't know how we'd wanna.
We usually say slow growing is what we look at, no, seriously. And how many inches it can grow per year, so we do work with the landscape architects all the time like this, so it's not an unusual request.
Do you know, we can't re, just request a height restriction? On new, on new plants?
It's very difficult to do that, because plants do, like, if I say it's a six-foot height restriction, becomes a code enforcement type of issue, an enforcement on private property, to continually have the discussion of chopping those down, and how often do you do that? And then you end up with a lot of disputes between neighbors, because, you know, you're talking about inches. So the preference for staff is always to go by what we have sort of listed as slow growing, and it's pretty simple for the landscape architect to switch these out to something that wouldn't grow to these heights, and, you know, as quickly as maybe a bamboo or something else. And then the idea of our codes talks about the negotiation between neighbors with respect to maintenance of trees and maintaining of use. We don't regulate that at, at the town. I know, it's, it's rather confusing, but we, it's private property, we won't be doing that with vegetation.
I would support saying slow growing species.
And that's on the, the south property line?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's, that's, that's one, it sounds like we can all get to, to the same place on that one. And then I guess it comes down to, I mean, I, it sounds like we're all kind of, I, I, I'm the only one that's probably okay with it as is. It sounds like there's different numbers that are floating around out there. I, I mean, I, I definitely would encourage whatever we get to, number one, that it be as least, as, as little as possible, but I, I also feel that giving the, the applicant and the design team the kind of ability to, to pull that out where they want to, opposed to just mandating a ceiling height in the bedroom.
Agreed.
All right.
I agree.
So, I've heard everything from one to three?
I'll try three.
What's that? I know, it would, Jim's always gonna be the biggest number. I mean, I, I could get, I could get behind one.
I'd like a gray roof, too.
Pulling out, pulling out a foot, I, I, again, I don't think it really makes a significant positive impact. I, no more than two does.
What was you saying?
Yeah, here's, I guess, for me, for me, like, one versus two, like, it makes, I, I feel like it makes big differences when you're like, that's gonna free up, like, the shoreline of Sausalito, or that's going to free up the view of the water or something like that, when it's kind of off to the side and you're freeing up some trees or something like that. Again, I'm looking at more from a view perspective.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I will, I'll go, I'm gonna go as low as, you, you get the third, the third vote, I guess. Because the thing for me is, from the massing perspective, when you sit on that couch, there's no second level. When you stand up, there's a huge second level, so it's like, it, for me, it's massing. And it's just walking that, that mass feels so close to your, to, to the property, I, I guess where, I, I will say within limits, so, and it's like, yes, I will not, because it is a balance, I, if it's, you know, how is we don't know that interior height of it?
You don't know the interior height, well, I'll, I'm sort of seeing this lower roof elevation, but I don't see the upper finished floor level, it looks like it's at thirty-six feet. And the top of the parapet, the line looks susceptible, it says forty-eight.
Forty-eight five.
Forty-eight and a half.
Right.
But I, that datum's not really touching it, it's like an error in the, in the CAD file. No, this one shows it on it, so one of the sheets right here. The sh- the, the section for sheet, um, let's see.
A three one?
A three two shows the, the spot elevation at the top at forty-eight and a half, but the parapet, it's underneath the parapet, top of the parapet line, so I don't know what's. A three two shows the um the spot elevation at the top at forty eight and a half, but the parapet, it's underneath the parapet, top of the parapet line. So I don't know what's going on there.
I think.
Do you see that? Like, the dash line is not touching the top of the parapet, but then the 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 section below it. Shows at the the top of the roof elevations at forty eight and a half. So I don't I don't know what's going on. And then if you go to the next. Section, the longitudinal section at um A three point one, you see the top of the parapet at forty and a half. So I think there was just a little cat error. So it's a twelve and a half foot um from finished floor to top of parapet, which is kind of a weird way to sort of assess that twelve and a half feet, I think. If you go from. Yes, I can't see these elevations very well. My my thing doesn't um.
Yeah, it looks like it's ten plus two and a half, right?
Am I doing this wrong? Am I doing the math wrong? But the it's should be finished for the upper elevation to, it looks like the datum's at thirty six feet, and then the top of the parapet is at forty and a half. Maybe wrong, but that's twelve and a half feet from finished floor to top of parapet. Can somebody try to prove me wrong?
I I mean, which, that's not reasonable for a ten foot ceilings and then like two feet worth of roof, like.
But it's two and a half.
It's because of the parapet. It's the roof and then plus the parapet that sticks up. I like parapets on flat roofs, like a tiny bit, just for someone's safety reasons. But like, it looks like the parapet's like a foot and a half, maybe.
It's it's the the roof plus the parapet is this high. The roof thickness is about twelve inches. And the parapet is at least a foot and a half.
I think it's a foot and a half.
Yeah, I think.
That's why I I think it's.
Yeah.
Yeah. Two and a half feet from the underside of the finished ceiling.
Can staff provide some insight into what exactly we're looking at from a height from the. Uh, C uh, the roof plus whatever sticks above the roof?
I'm I don't, I'm not able to scale it off the drawings right now. I can leave and go. But it looks like what I'm showing, they measured is from grade to the top of the parapet. It's twenty three feet total. If we're looking at. I'm trying to follow along. If you're looking on the second section on sheet A three point two.
All right, so I. I'm gonna, uh, so I I like to make a motion uh to reopen the uh public hearing, simply for not, uh, we just simply for clarification on some numbers on the plans, so that we know what we're looking at.
So the we want the upper finished floor elevation, the finished floor, um. The spot elevation at this finished floor for the upper piece and then the top of the parapet.
Yeah, so so again, we're not reopening the entire public hearing. We are simply opening it up just to get some clarification on some numbers. So is there a second on that motion?
Second.
All in favor? I oppose, none? All right, so we uh could maybe have.
Yeah, here, uh, the CAD block for the elevation slid down on that one, so it is six inches below the parapet. Uh, it's it's just not registering. It's also six inches below the finished floor. So you are correct. Finished floor for the upper level is thirty six. The parapet is forty eight point five, so it's twelve and a half feet overall.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are we good on on numbers?
Yeah.
All right, excellent. All right, um, that we will close the public hearing again and see where we are on numbers.
I favor one foot drop.
One foot drop. I'm also, do you wanna?
I'm still on three.
Would you like to make a mo- would you like to make a motion and we'll see if the motion passes, based on that?
Like to make a motion that the um project as is is categorically exempt from SEQA. And that we have two conditions that we'd like to um impose. The first is a different species along the south wall fence or the south fence. Um, that is slow growing and can be managed at, you know, at a reasonably managed at the fence height. The second is that the um the spot elevation for the top of the parapet. Of the of the structure, the secondary structure is reduced from thirty six to thirty five feet.
I would second that.
Could you add one more thing? A gray roof rather than a white roof?
Uh, you you don't have to. Well, so there's a mo- motion on the floor. So there's a motion on the floor that just got said. So then, I'm sorry, did your motion also include categories from SEQA?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, um, so I second it. Uh, all those in favor?
Do we need a voice vote for this, Chair? Do you think we need a voice?
Yes, let's do a voice.
Okay, so let's start with all those in favor first. Um. Board Member Dorcio.
Aye.
Board Member Kim.
Aye.
Board Member Rosner.
Nay.
Board Member Malat.
Aye.
Board Member Chong.
Aye.
The motion carries.
With that, uh, the motion carries for uh. The for eight oh one Tiburon Boulevard, and we move on to the next item on this evening's agenda, uh, PH two one twenty seven Leland Way. The applicant could come up and uh, uh, you have, yeah, maybe some shuffle. Does anybody need a break? Very good. All right, so uh, fifteen minutes. If the, yes, if the applicant for one twenty seven Leland come up, please. Yeah. Uh, again, you'll have twenty minutes to present. And then we will open it up to the public, and then also you have five minutes after that.
A procedural question. Can I grant a few minutes as a presenter to someone else in the two minutes?
No, but uh, to like a to a member of the public or to somebody, like, you have twenty minutes for your, yeah, you have twenty minutes for your presentation.
Yeah.
Right, and but we won't, we won't hit twenty minutes.
What's that?
We won't hit twenty minutes.
I mean, if you want the neighbors to be part of your presentation, then that would be allowed. Um, if that if that was, yeah. But the the neighbors would have an opportunity to speak for for three minutes each person after your presentation.
Okay. All right, okay. So uh, good evening. I'm Jeff Goddessman. And I'm here with my wife Judy. We were originally here on August first, and we're returning because of the decision to continue the hearing to today. Uh, in summary, we moved to the Bay Area three years ago and purchased our home near in Tiburon nearly a year ago. In uh, in September of twenty twenty three. We moved into the house last December. Uh, at the time, it was my understanding that we were waiting to hear from the town to see if there was anything that we needed to do. Or whether a variance would be granted without us having to do anything, uh, and the case closed. Uh, we'd never been through this procedure. Uh, there were some miscommunications about the variance application, but we started working with the design review staff toward the end of the year. Uh, we completed all the necessary paperwork and tried to address all the requirements that staff requested from us. Um, and all the necessary paperwork was completed uh this past summer. Um, the fence in question was built in twenty twenty. Uh, we presented our case on August first, and we are back. Uh, and I'll reiterate, um, okay, good, we have the, could we go down to the pictures? Um, or actually, we could start right here. Um, so the fence in question exceeds six feet. But it is not consistent. It starts at the, it's it's six feet at the front and the back. And at various points along the fence, I've taken measurements. On average, it's like five inches over uh over grade. Um. So if we could go to page, I think it's page four down right there. Those are, so just so you see what the fence looked like before it was rebuilt in twenty twenty. We weren't around then, but. We've been provided these photos. Um, and if you look at the uh, the new fence, which is just below there, um, some pictures below there.
Sorry, we're having some technical difficulties. Be just a second. Sorry to interrupt you. Thank you so much. Sorry about that. We'll add this back to your allotted time.
Okay, all right.
However, you're right. Sorry about that.
Oh, okay. So if you could could scroll down a little, are we back? Are we back to presenting? Okay. All right, so if you go back down, uh, you can see. What the fence looks like now in in that photo on the top left hand side. Much improved. Um. So if we could uh scroll down again, uh, even a little bit further. Um, there's some larger photos, uh, one more, please. Okay, so this is, this is a broad view of the fence. Um, and one of the reasons, well, the reason it really varies in height is because it's really. The fence itself is leveled. The yard is not. It slopes from the back toward the front, but the fence sort of matches the roof lines. Um, and the place where it's really the highest is where in between the houses. So um. And if we could show, uh, if you could scroll, let me see, I think, down. Uh, okay, so there's there's a good photo. You can see that the fence is just below, well, really, it's above the windows on the Cahill sides. So with that extra height, we're not looking into their windows. If you could scroll down, um, I'm sorry, if you could scroll the other way. I'll find it right there. I mean, you can see how it really is just enough to block the view. And maybe scroll up another one, might even show it better. So that's, you can see out our windows, and you can see the top of the fence, and you can just see the top. Of the windows there. So that that height is really necessary, is my point. Um. Again, I I I've said the average height of the fence is five, five inches over that six feet on average. Um. The very beginning, the gates that are in front of the house on Leland Way are six feet, and the six feet. Six foot part of the fence extends a little bit back into the yard. Anything over six feet is not visible to anyone else except us. Okay, so um, I'd like to address uh the staff report for today, and uh, I mean, I've done this presentation, I'm changing, uh, kind of reiterating some things. And adding some things, but uh specifically for the staff report, uh, and specifically, we were talking about special circumstances last time. And we provided like a list of five special circumstances to staff since the meeting uh last August first. And these special circumstances are listed in the staff report along with uh staff's comments. Um, the special circumants, the special circumstances pertain to the first of the four required findings that are in the variance application that justify. The reason for a variance to be issued. So uh, required finding one, special circumstances. Let me just go through them. There are many fences in the neighborhood which exceed six feet in height, and we've, I think we've all acknowledged that. Since this is to be considered on a case by case basis, let me make the case that our circumstance alone warrants the granting of a variance. As I've shown in the photos, the slight additional fence height is required for privacy. The additional height is not excessive. It just barely blocks each of us from seeing into each other's windows. It accomplishes a very specific function in the circumstance. It is not excessive in that respect. The additional height is is primarily where the houses are close together. The issue is really privacy. The slight additional height provides that privacy. In um special circumstance, we provided as number five, I've mentioned that the distance from our house. Um, at about five eight from the fence. Staff has provided site plans for many years ago that show a required six feet setback, and I'm I'm not an architect, and I don't know the exact definition. But our windows are not separated by six feet on each side. I'm not sure I can explain that, but they're about, um. The houses are also have are separated. The roof lines themselves are about five foot three inches from roof line to roof line. Okay, the not what we listed as special circumstance number two, the pass for model of the of our neighbors, the Cahill residents required a finished floor height. To be six inches higher than our residence. If the fence were lowered, it would be, we would be pairing into each other's homes. Specifically bathrooms and bedrooms. We believe this to be to constitute a special circumstance. Uh, number three, what is, we believe, a special circumstance is that this fence was uh has. Support from neighboring Bel Air residents. Eight letters from neighbors have been submitted to the town. The there have not been any objections to to our fence at all. In addition, I'll mention that it would cost about twenty five hundred dollars to lower the fence height. Granted, this isn't the sole reason for for granting a variance, but I want to point it out. Uh, in number five, that what I we've listed as. Variance number five, yes, I skipped four, but in number five, I've addressed along with number one, and this refers to the homes being less than six feet apart. In addition, as I've mentioned, the yard slopes from the rear of the yard toward the front, and the fence was built so that the top follows the roof lines. And explains why the fence at the back of the art is six feet and gradually increases to the six nine height. The houses are level, but the yard is not. Um. Okay, but now going back to the required findings, and number two, the required findings in the application. Regarding the issue of whether this would be a special privilege, the fence is not out of character for the neighborhood, since there are so many other fences that exceed the six foot limit. As a matter of fact, denying us this variance would be the exact opposite of a special privilege. Um, there have been some email exchanges, maybe the Cahills will address it. I hope they will, but it seems that. There have, there have been uneven enforcements of this six foot limit as well. Um, in required finding number three at the last hearing, I think I gave the impression that I was in agreement that the situation was self-created. That is not true. I mean, how could it be self-created hardship if it wasn't created by myself? Uh, let me be clear that we inherited this issue when we bought the house. I just never thought it would get this far. Uh, number four, um, and I think everyone agrees, I don't think that that anyone is claiming that the excessive height. Is detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other properties. There's, I think there's all agreement here. Um, and again, I'll add that there are now six letters from neighbors in support of granting the variance. Eight? Yes, eight. In summary, uh, I just want to point out again that our neighbors, the Cahills, who are here, they are in support of granting the variance. For the fence height. Uh, the eight letters from neighbors also demonstrate additional support. No one is harmed by granting us this variance. Um, the issue is privacy. That is the most important issue. Denial of the straightforward variance would deny us a right to privacy. Um, and. There really is a common sense aspect to this issue, and in granting the variance, I think it's the right thing to do. I think we've provided enough practical and common sense aspects to the matter, which should just make it easy for you to grant the variance. And um, end this year long process. I respectfully request your positive response in granting the variance. Thank you.
And then I have a few additional ones. So, um, good evening, and I am Judy Goddessman, the owner of the house of Leland with my husband Jeff. Um, and I have a few just additional comments here. Um, as Jeff mentioned, we bought this house almost exactly a year ago with escrow closing on September twenty ninth, twenty twenty three. One of the main selling features of this house is how wonderfully light and bright it is. There are walls of glass um facing the backyard. There are French doors, sliding doors, stationary windows, walls of windows that open. And I'm wondering if you can pull up the last two.
The last page, please.
So this is from the inside of our house, and this is what we look around to. If that fence were shortened. Um, we would, um, there are blinds on the outside there. And those would have to be brought down if we wanted privacy. We wouldn't be able to enjoy this backyard to its full extent. And if you go down one more F one picture.
Up one.
Up one. Um, is that, yeah.
Yes.
That is from our bedroom, um, and that's a window in our bedroom, and we look directly onto that fence and onto their house. Um, and if that fence is shortened, we'll be looking into their house, and we won't have the privacy in our bedroom anymore. Um. Let me see. And so it would, um. This this would very unfortunately alter one of the main reasons we decided to buy this house. Um, a comment on the landscape. Um, a comment on the landscaping too. The rose bushes and trees against the fence have now had a year to grow. In altering the fence, uh, landscaping along the fence will likely be damaged and will incur yet further redoing an expense in addition to the expense of altering the fence. The amount that Jeff mentioned, the twenty-five hundred was an old number for, um, it's probably much more now. And that's not including landscaping. Um, he talked about the different heights in the fence and to me that's an aesthetics issue. If the fence would either be crooked or, you know, it, it just wouldn't look right. So that's an aesthetic thing. Um, uh, to me, I see a contradiction to that work from last time. Two concepts discussed, um, last time, one requirement is that the house maintain the character of the neighborhood. That character includes many fences taller than six feet, six feet. Our fence fits this character and it's not even as tall as many. The contradiction that I see brought up last time is that each case should be by, uh, judged on its own without comparison. To me, that seems like two contradictory requirements fitting in with the character of the neighborhood and judging on its own merit. Um, I would like to mention and remind you that the only reason this has come up to the design review board is because the house was sold. If the previous owners had stayed in the home, the fence would not even be an issue. And in closing, it's kind of repetition of what Jeff said. Um, I would like to say that our neighbors at one-twenty-one Leland Way, Tim and Joni Cahill, with whom we share the fence are in full agreement with keeping the fence as is. They are wonderful neighbors and feel as we do about maintaining the privacy this fence allows for all of us. So for all these reasons, we hope you will grant the variance. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that.
I have one question.
Yeah.
Questions? Um, would you mind going to the picture with the piano? Um, just to understand, there's no, is there landscaping on the other side of that? Is there, what's the, the distance, is it distance? Yeah, can you elaborate just, um?
Oh, you're looking, it's looking right out the patio doors. Uh, directly, there is landscape, there is some landscaping there, just not in that very spot. You can see a little bit of it to the right. But, uh, some of the other photos, the, the broader views shows the landscaping along the yard, if you want to see that.
Oh, but specifically those two windows, is there, um, what's, what's in between?
That is the fence you're looking, that is that close to the fence.
A couple, I would think that there's eight foot, isn't it?
It's gonna be about five.
That's about right. Uh, so, so looking over the fence, that is the Cahill residents, their windows.
Okay, yeah.
That's how close.
And that's your pass, it's passageway basically, right?
Sorry?
It's your walk.
Uh, yes, the side of the house, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah. All right. With that, thank you. Uh, we might, uh, we might pull you back up depending on what the public has, so, uh, you grab a seat and if anybody from the public would like to come up and say anything, uh, if you could, please come up to the center of the microphone. Uh, state your name and address. Um, and you're allowed three minutes per person.
My name is Tim Cahill. I'm here this evening with my wife, Joni. Uh, since nineteen ninety-four, Joni and I and our son have been the owners and residents of one-twenty-one Leland Way, which is a property immediately south of the Gottsman's residence. The fence in question sits on our shared east-west property line and we have a vested interest in preserving the fence as is currently built. As thought such, we fully support Jeff and Judy's variance request and respectfully ask that the board do the same. As Jeff and Judy articulated, there are a number of what we believe special circumfence, circumstance for granting this variance. I won't go back and reiterate them. Uh, as Judy mentioned, and as you know, the reason the Gottsman's are seeking this variance approval is because the excess fence height was listed as a deficiency on its residential building resale inspection report uh, when they acquired the property last year. Uh, based on a little investigative work that we've done, which we shared privately with, uh, the planning staff, we have found a number of instances where properties with pre-existing excess fence heights were either sold or newly constructed without the building inspector citing the fence height as a discrepancy when performing its inspections or preparing its resale inspection report. In fact, we could not find any instance where the fence height was listed as discrepancy on any Bel Air resale, um, inspection reports. It seems that, uh, the one-twenty, uh, seven Leland Way property is, or the Gottsman's property is being held to a different standard when it comes to compliance with property line fence heights than virtually all of the properties where building inspections were performed. We believe this exception constitutes a, an additional, uh, special circumstances, uh, in, in addition to ones that, uh, Jeff and Judy enumerated. Um, and it allows for the fence height variance request to meet the four variants, uh, variance findings needed for approval as outlined in the Tiburon zoning ordinance um, as follows. So the first one is special circumstance. A rejection of the variance request would deprive the Gottsman's and the K Ls, us, of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity, uh, i.e. uh, properly lined fences that with heights exceed, exceed six feet. Special privilege. Uh, number two, uh, approval of the variance request would not constitute a special privilege. Other properties in the vicinity have consistently not had excess property height being cited as a discrepancy by the building inspector when preparing its resale inspection report or when signing off on new construction projects. Three, unnecessary physical hardship. Rejection of the variance request would result in the Gott, Gottsman's and us, the Cahills, enduring unnecessary physical hardship in terms of cost, time and inconvenience to lower the fence that other properties in the vicinity are not being burdened with.
All right, we're, we're at three minutes, so if I could get you to wrap it up or I could just combine it and do six for both of you? All right.
Yeah, that sounds good. Thank you. Keep it down. Um, non-detrimental to the, uh, the property, uh, to the public, excuse me, is number four. In its August one and September nineteenth staff report, the planning staff has found that the fence as currently built is not detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other properties in the vicinity and as discussed previously, has received unanimous support from our neighbors. Um, we have lived in Bel Air long enough to have, uh, seen numerous controversial projects come before the board, some of which are in some phase of construction now. We appreciate that the board has to make difficult decisions regarding remodels and new construction that result in some affected Bel Air residents being less than satisfied with the board's decision and seeing neighborhood relationships fractured as a result. In the instance of this relatively benign fence height variance request for a fence pre-exist, for a pre-existing fence has been existence since two thousand, approval by the board would be universally applauded by the primary stakeholders, the Gottsman's and the Cahills, along with the Bel Air neighbors, community and public at large. Approval by the board should be a straightforward decision. We thank you in advance for your consideration and we hope that you take a practical and common sense approach to approving the Gottsman's variance request. And I'll turn it over to my wife.
Hi, um, my name is Joni Cahill and, um, over the last, um, thirty years, I have seen a lot of changes in our neighborhood. Some I've agreed with, um, some I have not. One of our guiding principles has always been to be good neighbors and to be as supportive of a neighbor as we can be. As the board knows well, there are many Bel Air projects that have created a lot of animus between neighbors and it continues to do so. We're trying to avoid that. In the case of the fence between one-twenty-one and one-twenty-seven Leland Way, which is while it's the Gottsman's variance, it's a shared fence, if any fence belongs to both parties. There is unanimous agreement between neighbors who, um, have been submitted comments as well as anybody that we know that, um, has seen the fence, that our shared fence is not objectionable in terms of size and as a matter of fact, people have commented on the nice design and how much of an improvement it is over the previous overgrown hedge. Twenty years ago, when we remodeled our home and added two additions to the back of the house, we built our addition six inch above grade for the code towards accommodate the code. And this in combination with the Gottsman's home being slightly upslope from ours, which really is only, it's a couple of inches, probably about three inches. Um, would allow them to see directly into our bathroom if the fence were lower. I like, because of the fence, I can keep the shade open, I can keep the air that gets sunlight and it also gives better circulation.
We're at, we're at six minutes.
Oh, okay. I just asked that you approve this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're done. All right, uh, does anybody else wish to speak on this application? All right, we'll go to the Zoom call to see if anybody online, uh, wishes to speak. If you could use the raise hand feature at the bottom of your Zoom screen.
There is no one with their hands raised.
All right, thank you. Um, with that, the applicant does have, uh, five additional minutes. Um, if you'd like to come up and address, uh, wasn't there any concerns? But if there's, uh, anything you'd like to address or if the board has any questions.
Quick question, so the top of the fence is level all the way around?
Um, no, there is, um, a step down if you look at, uh, maybe a little higher, um, right there you can see. So in the bottom left photo, you can see it's six feet, the gate itself is six feet. And it's six feet, I believe it's probably six feet in length and that's where it jumps up to nine and a half. And then it tapers down to six feet toward the back of the yard. So you're looking from the front gate there. So it's really six feet till it jumps up to the maximum at six, uh, foot nine and a half.
Okay, I thought you, I thought you said nine feet, I was.
Oh, no, no, oh.
Nine inches, okay, got it.
Six feet, nine inches.
Got it.
Right, oh, that would be a different thing also.
Thank you.
All right.
I have, I have a question, but.
Was, 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 yeah, was there, was there anything that you were going to use your five minutes to speak on? Um, I think, I think we're, we're, we're done presenting, right? So maybe you have something, okay. Now. Any, any, we'll just maybe see if there's any other questions?
Yeah, I have one question, so, um, the, there's a six inch, uh, the neighbors finished floor height's six inches above yours.
That's my understanding, correct.
And, and your neighbor mentioned your property goes uphill. Do you, but it sounds like the elevation's the same on the property line. So can you talk a little bit about like where the, where, where your finished floor height is in relationship to the base of the fence?
Uh, it's, I'm not sure, well, it's, they're about the same height.
Okay.
We're not, I don't, we're not six inches over.
Okay.
Okay, so it's.
By my head. Those were FHA houses, if those are original, uh, window heights, windows headers, they would be at six feet eight inches off the floor typically and about an inch of frame below that, so six feet seven.
Any other questions? The applicant? All right. All right, thank you. Um, with that, we will close the public portion of the hearing and bring it back to the board. Uh, would anybody like to?
I have a question for staff real quick.
Yep.
Um, the list of variances granted for, um, over six foot, I think there were seven of them that cited the basis for approval or elevation difference between properties. Do you have any details on that? Um, on those circumstances?
So I don't have any details. What I want to note to the board, and this is the difficult part, is it is based on this particular lot and not what happened to any other lots because we don't know whether or not they actually got a variance or built it illegally or whatever, then we'll have to deal with each one of those separately. Um, and it would solely be, um, what you're talking about today. On Leland one-twenty-seven.
These, but these van, these were granted variances, correct, or?
You do have a table of the ones that were granted.
Yeah, it was specifically asking.
Yeah, oh, okay, yes, you do have a table of those which were granted.
Yeah, and I didn't know if there was any, any, um, information around the, the, I think half, half of them were for the purpose of elevation difference between properties. I didn't know if it was like.
So that usually would be a topographical type of thing where we would consider it a special circumstance.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
And then here, there's four findings that we have to make um, in order to grant a variance. It's really unfortunate that they acquired a property where the previous owner should have filed a variance, but didn't, um. Special circumstance, I would argue, is that buildings are kind of set and this is supposed to set. They're close together, they're, they're also, they're not crooked, they're on level plane. So it's, looks to me that there is one jog, but it's pretty level all the way around, is that I'm reading, so. I don't, I think it's, the privacy in this particular area is pretty important and so the other special circumstances is that the height, the height of the houses are set, you know, they're, they're flat all the way across. There's some jogs in the, in the, uh, landscape, so that causes, you know, the levelness to kind of change the relationship between the datum, so. I can make a finding with the first, the second variance, uh, the second find I can make. The third, about practical difficulty or self-created hardship cannot be created. It's unfortunate. I need to think about that one. And then the fourth one is not detrimental, I can make that finding. I don't know how to adjust the third, maybe somebody could take a stab at the third.
Well, I think unnecessary hardship is that this is given on this party through a transaction that's now a year old and there's no way they can go back to the previous owner and get any, any money to repair it for twenty-five hundred or five thousand or whatever it is. But more, more importantly, I think, I, I went out there and I actually took my measuring tape and I measured six adjacent houses that looked like they were over six feet and sure enough, six-three, six-five, six-seven, six-three, six-four. It, it's common in the, in the neighborhood and I didn't walk more than three houses in any direction from this, this fence line. So I consider it a, an existing condition in the neighborhood. Uh, and I'm pretty sure I know why it happens. In, in this case, maybe not, but, uh, in most cases, it's, you get six-foot boards, but you don't want to stick them in the dirt because the termites will get them. So you raise them three or four inches off the ground and that makes a six-foot four fence and it's almost a constant. Uh, so I, I don't have that plus the fact that these houses are so close together, the privacy is the most important element to try to maintain. I think this is a, this is a, a reasonable way of getting to privacy and probably we had to look at changing the ordinance. But, uh, can't do that with this one, so I would vote for this in a heartbeat. And my unnecessary hardship is that it's, it's a condition that was created by a previous owner and it's, it is in, in situation, this owner did not create it.
Which I don't think that necessarily, yeah, we, we, we can't count that because it's, just because it was created by a previous owner, it's like, it's, uh, still a self-created by like the property itself.
Then I would rely on de minimis, it's a minimal effect on anybody except the two owners and they both are for it, so it's, it should be done the right way.
All right, let's get, we'll finish getting everyone's opinion, Alex.
I, I'm still where I was unfortunately the first time around and I agree with you, this should be, if this is a problem in this neighborhood with the proximity of the properties, um, being the six-foot setback, it should be a change in the code and ordinance. Unfortunately, it's our job to, to have to make the findings to, you know, that, that support the, the ordinance that's currently written. So.
Someone needs to come up with a good number three.
I'm, I'm waiting, I was waiting, I was, I was, you know, um, you know, the six-inch floor height difference, like, is there a va, yeah, I was trying to understand, like, is there a valley where the, where the fences?
Maybe the practical difficulty is that we would have to move around the houses.
I mean, we had to, we'd have to what?
Move around the houses.
Well, I guess the question is, I mean, and, and you all, you know, may probably know the neighborhood a little bit better than me with different projects, like.
Like, you know, there's a, it sounds like maybe there's a challenge for plantings. In that, for, in that, you know, I think that first section that has a lot, maybe the majority of the height because of the access and need for access and it didn't access it.
So what I'm just saying is that if, if you keep it at, at the six foot datum all the way around, the problem is that the houses are level and the ground is not. And so you'll have like peek-a-boo situations where you can actually see over the fence in some areas because of the grade and, and not. So in order for the three to not hold, that's saying that you can actually move the houses so that the fence is also, you know. So that's, that's difficulty that.
The unnecessary hardship is the loss of privacy.
So this, so we can't talk about the self-created hardship because it's because of the past and present owners. What I'm saying is that it could either result in practical difficulty or unnecessary physical hardships.
Well, that's what they articulated.
Yep.
Look, I, I listen, I think they articulated this very well, the findings, and I think they, their arguments supported these, the ordinance that we can accept this.
I agree. Yeah, so I mean, I, uh, I mean, if I was to sum up, I think the way everybody on this entire board probably feels, right, is that it seems ludicrous that if we don't approve this, we're going to ask this applicant to go rip down a fence that wasn't even built by him in the first place, right? Like, and, and so.
And exposes privacy.
There's, there's a desire to want to try to get to, to that place, right? But then the state of California says, hey, look, these are the, the findings that we have to make on these, you know, for variance. Uh, and one of them that always has, over the years, been the most difficult is the, you know, um, number three. As, as we all know, so I, I guess, like, I, I, I haven't heard anything yet. It's like, hey, because it is a straightforward, like, flat lot, right? I mean, if, I, I know that in the past, like, if, if it was a, because I think all these other variances, I mean, I remember some of them that were on this list, right? It's like, okay, well, you're on Tiburon Boulevard on the corner, headlights come beaming through, you know, and you need a taller fence in order to, to basically avoid that physical hardship, right? Um, and so other ones were, you know, the slope of the lot was so dramatically a drop off on Tressal Glen for Venus Court that they needed to build a twelve-foot fence, but it still didn't even come up to eight feet at, you know, at the, at Tressal Glen. So, um, I guess if there was something that was like, hey, there's a physical hardship that a fence needs to be this high to prevent light from a nearby house from beaming in the window, right? And that, you know, is a primary space that, you know, can't have light at night or something. I guess something like that, I think, is usually what, what, you know, the finding needs, if, with the staff, that, that's what the finding needs to have, that like, this, you know, by not allowing this, you know, almost seven-foot fence, um, that a hardship is created for that applicant. And like, I, I don't think I've heard it yet, but that, that, not to say that it's not still out there.
Here, here, here's one. Okay, try this one. That you can't move the windows. The windows are set. So in order to, um, sort of mitigate light pollution and privacy, or in, in order to mitigate warriorism, you would have to move the windows. Right? You would have to move, move the windows or even the fence. So because they're so close together, this is a very big issue. And if, if they were further apart, it wouldn't be as big of an issue because they're so close together. The, the heights that, that, the top of the sills really do matter. Top of the window, sorry, the top of the windows really do matter and we can't move those. And therefore, we have to have a fence.
I can support that.
I mean, I, I do just want to say, if, you know, we're majority vote, if the majority can make the findings, the majority can make the findings. I, I just do want to state in public the reason, like, we have had, what, five fence variances the last three meetings or something? Like, thi- this is why we're, we do have to make the findings and it's, it's, this isn't like a.
Yeah, yeah, no.
I just want to state that publicly because I'm sure that, you know, people in the room may not be tuning into Zoom every Thursday to watch us. Which we are entertaining sometimes, I will say, but, um, it, this is, this is just, it's important that we, we get this right.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think when, a lot of times, like in, uh, in Belveron, when it's like, we just found ourselves constantly having to make block cutters variances and setback variances or whatever. It's like, hey, let's, let's change the overall code to be something different and make, I mean, maybe there's an argument that says that like fences in Tiburon should be like six and a half feet or seven feet or there's, maybe there's another height that is a better height, right? Which, uh, i- if that is kind of the growing trend of people wanting taller fences, right? But it should be something that's done at, like, you know, let's change the code to be something different. Um, and maybe, maybe worth looking at, uh, because I, but there's also a lot of times when you don't want the fence that high, right? Because it impacts views and all these other things.
Yeah.
Um, like, I, I think just, uh, it, it sounds like it's probably enough to get a, um, a majority. I, I'd probably tend to, to say no, not because I don't want to, to cause trouble for this applicant, but just simply to make sure that it's documented that we wrestle with the findings for something like this and that it's not just like, hey, it's open season on, you know, seven-foot fences and flat neighborhoods. Um, you know, with, just because the houses are close together.
You know, I, I think the issue is, is the practical difficulty in this, in this particular situation is that we are, they're trying to prevent voyeurism and light pollution. And they cannot do that unless they move the windows or they add certain features to their, the adjoining or adjacent windows, or they have a fence that sort of provides that shield. That's what the practical hardship is. For me, that's how I, I can make that finding. I don't know if you all agree, but.
I can make that.
If you, if you want to make a motion.
Make a motion.
I think you turned it off.
I like to make a motion that we grant the variance to, um, allow for the fence to go up to six foot, nine and a half inches in this particular case. Um, and then we can make the finding, and it's categorically exempt from sequoia and that, that, that we can make the four findings, um, that are required to.
Can you reiterate those findings? So we make sure we have them on that record because they have been all over the place for us at staff. So, and what you're really doing is you're approving or overturning staff's recommendation.
Yes. Yes, we are. So variance number one, we can make the finding that there are circumstances, special circumstances applicable to the property um, that deprive the applicant of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity. Um, there are topographic and some, um, uh, what do you call it?
Relationship.
Rela-, yeah, adjacencies to other buildings that are pre-existing. That, that have allowed for granting of, um, higher than six-foot fences at times, I would presume that have been granted.
Has to be specific to this lot, not, for the specific one, you're going to have to talk about how it's specific.
Special circumstances is that there is, um.
Topography and adjacency.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
The second is that it doesn't grant a, so the second isn't specific to this lot because it's saying that it's not a granting of special privileges. Because we have done this to other, um, for other properties where, um, there are topographic changes and adjacency issues where we have allowed for a variance in the fencing. Is that, is that a good?
It's, it's, it's okay. It's not bad. Not bad at all.
The third is that the practical difficulty and unnecessary physical hardship, these buildings are already built. Um, and in order to mitigate, um, voyeur, voyeurism and light pollution. Um, the other, uh, other alternative would be to change the window locations, the window, the tops of the windows. And so therefore, this is a way to sort of mitigate that. That risk. The fourth is, or that problem. The fourth is that the granting of the variance will not be detrimental to public welfare. And I think it's, or injurious to the other properties in the vicinity. And it's clear here that this fence is not detrimental to the public welfare or nor injurious to the adjacent property. Question.
And do we have a second?
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No.
No.
All right, so with that, uh, the application.
Did I have one nay or two nays?
Two nays.
Two nays and three yeses? Okay, thank you.
A motion.
All right, um, motion passes and we move on to the next item.
Let the record show that we will be bringing a resolution back to the board.
Yeah, sorry.
Because we did not have a resolution for this action at the next regularly scheduled meeting for your, um, adoption.
So, so for clarification, that was a motion to bring a resolution back at the meeting. Thank you.
We just needed further direction. Okay, thank you.
Um, yeah, yeah, we're gonna, we, we have a, um, uh, just maybe like a three-minute break. Or is that, is that what, yeah, so we're having a three-minute break, restroom, grab some water, uh, and please be back here at nine oh three. That's it, we have to know.
Are you ready for us or?
Yeah, just as soon as Suzanne gets back, we'll get, we'll get going again. You want some M and Ms or? I'll see what I got in my bag, hold on. That's all I can offer you. All right. All right, let's, uh, let's get started, assuming that we have at least somebody that can operate, uh, AV stuff. All right, um, moving right along to page three, uh, two thirty-eight Round Hill Road.
Um, hello all, uh, this is our home. I'm Keith and it's my wife Chloe. I just want to say thank you for taking the time to hear about our project and we're pretty excited about it. We moved into the home in twenty twenty as renters and, um, had our youngest child in the home and it's just a special place to us. And we just want to bring it up to uh, the size that we need to support our family. We have three kids and are hopefully going to have another. And yeah.
Yeah, we love the community and the school district is wonderful and we wanted to stay here for a long time. And we just want to modernize the home to, uh, fit our needs.
And we've been working with Cedric since we bought the home to kind of bring it up to what we were, what we're hoping to do. So, thank you guys.
All right, hello, uh, esteemed designer board. I miss being on that side.
Just being here nine fucking nights.
So, uh, my name's Cedric Banger. I, uh, uh, I'm Keith and Chloe's architect, been working with him for uh, a little while on this project as well as, uh, fixing some of the mistakes made by previous owners. Uh, that had, uh, that came up in some of those resale reports. Um, we will go to the next, next slide, kind of. Uh, actually, let's, let's go one more, um, just kind of talking about the existing house. Uh, it's, it's a little bit of an awkward roofline layout for a, a family of, of five and potentially growing. Uh, two bedrooms downstairs with a kind of a elongated bathroom and a powder room and, uh, two steps that separate the family room and the entry from the dining room and the kitchen. Uh, next slide upstairs is a uh, large primary bedroom that, um, with kind of adjacent storage spaces that, uh, has very little view. Uh, next slide. An aerial view of the house from MLS listing, um, the, if you look at the top of that, um, top of the, the second story, that there's little slivers of windows that, that offer you the views, which are quite spectacular. Uh, so really, um, the location of the house is originally built in seventy, early seventy, seventy-two, I believe. Uh, complicated site with thirty-four percent slope and I imagine this, uh, they worked very hard to get this house in its location. Um, so we really don't want to, uh, we want to minimize the amount of new foundation work because it's, it's, uh, pretty complicated. The bedroom locations obviously downstairs are a little problematic, so we really wanted to, uh, get the three kids bedrooms upstairs with the master bedroom. Uh, I, on a, on a site like this where there's no, no rear neighbor and really quite a bit of privacy. We, uh, we felt like that was, uh, justifiable and, and workable in this, uh, in this location. Uh, therein fixing this, the seventies roofline, which is, uh, tricky to work with without just redoing it. So I, I'm happy that Keith and Chloe were on board with exploring that. And, um, the current kitchen, which is in the back of the house, uh, has no connection to the pool without going either through the garage on the side you, uh, you see there or, uh, out the opposite end of the house. So that's, uh, tricky and, uh, especially with little kids. Um, I don't think Keith and Chloe mentioned their, their daughters range from two to, uh, to nine, so still, still quite little. Larger garage for a little more storage space. Uh, and then something that we, we had discovered in these last two winters in some of these big, um, atmospheric rivers, it's all bedrock up there. Like literally, there's like fountains coming out of the, out of the hillside. So we really wanted to try to control some of that water uh, with a new retaining wall in the back and, and prevent some of the water from getting under the house, which has happened. Uh, so next slide. Uh, so here's, here's our site plan. Um, the pool is existing, the, uh, Uh, so here's, here's our site plan. Um, the pool is existing, the, uh, ADU is, uh, permitted and not part of this application. Uh, though I'll explain the, the portion that is. You see, uh, there's a small dashed line. If you turn this in. Um, so, uh, the dashed line here indicates the existing, uh, deck. Uh, and we're, one of the goals was, was to get a little more, little more space, uh, on that deck. Uh, the deck is currently at the, at the limit of six feet into the front, uh, front yard setback. Uh, so that's where we are requesting a small, uh, front yard, uh, or sit, front yard variance. Uh, and then as you come up to the front door here, this portion as well pops, pops into the, into the setback and that really is so people can come up these, uh, stairs and, and access the, the deck space from, from that without going into the house. Um, I'll get into the landscape a little later. Uh, so next slide. Uh, the site improvements, we are, uh, doing a kind of a, uh, the street side, uh, fence, kind of a slatted design with, uh, two by twos, uh, cedar, uh, and then an auto gate, which is just gonna give a little, little more privacy for, for packages and deliveries and things like that. And then kind of a matching, uh, garbage enclosure. Uh, it's, uh, kind of the, the design was really intended to, as, as you approach it from an angle, it's kind of looks, looks porous and then as you look on, look straight on, it's kind of, it's a little more, little more, uh, see-through, which was attractive to, uh, to Keith and Chloe. Um, and kind of a, just a, a modern take on a, on a nice screen. Um, next slide. Uh, first floor. Uh, this is the existing living room. Really, we are just changing these doors so they align with the beams that are existing. That was something that, uh, has irked me from day one. Uh, this, this dashed line indicates the roughly eight feet that we're expanding the garage. Uh, we're lowering the floor here, so there's no, no, um, step anymore. Uh, and so this kitchen will now open directly to this rear space with, uh, a fountain and, and new retaining walls here, providing direct access up to the, the pool from, from here. Uh, one of the bedrooms becomes, uh, a media room den, uh, kind of a little bit more usable split bathroom, larger laundry room. And then this is the kind of guest, guest bedroom, um, with a, uh, existing powder room, not really being touched there. Uh, next slide. Upstairs, actually, maybe go back one. Uh, I'll just point out that this, this five foot three extension, makes, makes this a generous, generous bedroom, but really up on the second floor, if you go to the next slide. Second floor is where it makes these two bedrooms possible. Uh, and these are twelve by a little more than twelve foot bedrooms, so really not massive. This is, this is the existing wall line with the living room. So, and this is the existing exterior wall. So we, we were, we were limited in, in this direction without changing the foundation. This essentially is the existing master, um, master bathroom. We just switched the closets. So, one is for this, uh, bedroom two. Uh, bedroom, uh, one is essentially where the, the master suite is currently. Uh, connected hallway with clear story windows up here. And then going into the master suite, which now takes full advantage of the views and also provides, uh, access to, uh, this, this new deck, which is above the garage setback, uh, uh, about four feet from, uh, from the, the edge of the, uh, the wall here. So we can put some, some green, um, some, some planters with, with shrubs up here, uh, to provide a little more privacy from the street. Uh, next slide. Uh, roof plan, essentially, these are low, low slope roofs, going back to a common point here. This is a slightly larger, uh, slope. Uh, this is the one point that is kind of the highest on the, on the whole, uh, plan. Uh, and then you guys, I'm sure saw the, um, story poles, this becomes a, a, a flat roof over the, essentially at the same height of, of the, the, the flat portion of that garage roof now. Uh, but then there'd be a little, a, a bridge that connects the, the existing pool deck with, with this deck to, uh, just provide some connection, uh, from this story as well. Um, next slide. Uh, our FAR numbers, we're under, under FAR, we're, we're, uh, a little bit over the garage. Um, so we went from four seventy-six to six sixty-four square feet on the garage. So, uh, sixty-four of those square feet apply towards the FAR, but we're, we're at forty-one eighty-one. Where forty-five thirty-two is allowed. Um, and our lot coverage numbers, um, a portion, a portion of, of the ADU roof is proposed to get extended. Um, and so a portion of that will apply towards the FAR or towards the lot coverage. We're, we're, we're right at the fifteen percent, uh, which is tricky on a site like this cuz there's, uh, you know, decks very quickly get over three feet. Uh, and here we are really trying to match the existing deck height. No need to provide steps and whatnot there. Uh, next slide. Uh, the renderings, uh, we'll get into the materials a little later. I should note too, that, that the move, moving of the front door, uh, orientation was, was, uh, as Keith and Chloe realized, they often have to use a, uh, an oven mitt to, uh, open the door cuz it gets so hot in western light. So we really wanted to maximize the overhang here over the front door. South is kind of at a bit of an angle, but we're, we're essentially looking south, uh, more or less here. Uh, so nice big overhang that also provides some privacy to the master suite from the street. Uh, and to the downhill neighbors. Uh, this is this new retaining wall in the back that's gonna, uh, allow us to do this water feature. These are the kitchen, uh, doors that come out and provide access, uh, uh, right here. Uh, so this is the existing living room with the new doors. This is the bedroom to two kids bedrooms and guest bedroom volume that bumps out. Uh, here is the midmaster, uh, sorry, the, the entryway here. Extended garage with the, uh, partial green roof and then the master suite, uh, here. This is an existing pool cabana that has like a little, uh, little bathroom and the pool equipment in it. Uh, I'm not changing that. Next slide. Uh, materials, uh, this portion of roof is gonna be standing seam, uh, metal. Uh, we have a, a wood siding that's kind of a, a thermally treated wood, so it's, it's, uh, virtually maintenance free. Kind of a warm, warm brown color, kind of has some browns and grays to it. Uh, a stucco and kind of a, a forty percent gray, something like that. Uh, metal, black metal guardrails, uh, eBay deck, uh, under eaves will be, uh, will be, uh, cedar probably or, or a thermally treated wood of kind of similar color to the deck. Uh, black doors and windows, uh, some planters and kind of a dark gray. Site walls will be, uh, you know, smooth, uh, um, plaster concrete. Uh, this is an image of the fence and kind of the eaves, eaves and, uh, boards will be, uh, will be black. Next slide. Uh, this is the portion of the ADU, so ADU roof is here that's permitted. Uh, and we're looking to add this as part of, uh, part of this proposal. It adds two hundred thirty square feet of covered space and it really just, it just protects from the sun. So this, this is a fifty percent open, uh, slatted screen that really gives, uh, you can see in this, in this rendering, like that, that's the four foot overhang and this is the sun line with this additional screen. So it really, it really is kind of a night and day difference and, you know, we were careful to, to remain under the lot coverage. Uh, next slide, we have, uh, elevation. So this is the south elevation. Uh, front door. Uh, the garage that's kind of set forward. Um, this is kind of at the, the division line between the, uh, the garage, the master suite up on the second floor. That's held back, uh, from this overhang. Uh, the roof behind, and then this is the bedroom on the, uh, on the backside, on the north side of the house. Uh, next slide. Uh, street side elevation, um, kind of went through a little bit on the rendering already, but, uh, this is the, one of the girls bedrooms. These are just fixed clear story windows. Uh, and then the, we, we tried to, to minimize the, the glazing in, in, uh, the master suite to provide kind of a, a seating, seating area and just to eliminate kind of all glass. Uh, so really this, this corner is where the, the main view is. So we just, uh, um, tried to focus on that. Uh, next slide, the north elevation, really just, uh, windows in the, in the guests', uh, guest suite and then three windows and, uh, bedroom, bedroom and bathroom. Uh, next slide. Rear elevation, so this is facing the concrete wall. Really just kitchen, kitchen access, more just placed architecturally to get some, some light in there. These are not really gonna be visible to anyone. Um, next slide. Uh, some of the sections, so this is where we're popping up and getting that maximum roof height. Um, still, still under the thirty foot allowable. It all has a crawl space, uh, underneath here. Uh, there still will be two steps separately, kind of separating the kitchen level and the living room, which is sunken and at deck level. This is the portion of, uh, deck where we're pulling out that four foot seven. This shows a little bit the, the wall in the back with the fountain. Next slide. Just a section through the deck. This is, this is just gonna be a, um, a, a membrane roof sloping, uh, underneath a, a flat, uh, flat deck. Uh, next slide. Uh, just a section through the entire site as well as, uh, kind of through the center line of, uh, the, the house through that bedroom hall. So this, this is the steeper sloping, uh, uh, roof down to the back. Uh, next slide. Next slide, door, door window schedules. Uh, the landscaping, we pretty much, uh, we're just kind of doing some, some low lying shrubs, lavender, uh, white sage to kind of soften these walls. These are all existing, uh, as well as here. We'll fill in anything that gets, that gets damaged uh, in the creation of this fence. And then really just filling in and softening at the front side of the fence. And then, uh, and then trying to, uh, recreate the, the screening that, that, uh, was eliminated here that they, they, they had to redo the, um, sewer, uh, main, which was right here. So a lot of these got pulled out. Uh, so we just going, kinda wanna rebuild that, that, um, that privacy. Uh, next slide. Uh, some of the lighting, just a little, uh, lighting on the other side of the, uh, of the railing around the deck. Um, just kind of a, uh, standard, modern, uh, downlight, some path lights to light the, light the various paths and some step lights, uh, kind of minimal, minimal lighting in these overhangs. I just did three, three downlights here and one downlight in, uh, right here. Uh, next slide, I think. This kind of, uh, checking the boxes on the, uh, landscape management plan, um, veg- vegetation management, um, et cetera, et cetera. I think that's, uh, next slide, I think that, uh, just, I guess some of this civil, I know, uh, next slide, this is, that's the survey, next slide. So this is the civil that we had, had done for the ADU, but it, it tells a lot of the same story. We're kind of capturing a lot of the water behind this, uh, the ADU wall. Next slide. And then we're gonna continue it and collect it and bring it, bring it to this side of the house. So really trying to protect the water coming straight down towards the house. Uh, I think that's, we'll, we'll probably stop there. We don't need to go there quite yet. Um, any questions?
Any questions from the board? All right, with that, we'll open it up to the public, um, see if there's anybody that, from the public that wishes to speak on this application. All right, if you could come forward. And if you could state your name and your address and keep your comments to three minutes, please.
Yeah, hi there. My name is Michael Bokai. Uh, my wife and I own two forty Round Hill, which is the property right next door. Um, I'm new to this process, so, um, I'm not here to debate details, but I just wanted to, uh, make it very well known that, um, um, we, we have a, we have several issues with the proposed plan as is. Uh, we think it's, it's very imposing. Uh, we, we bought our house, uh, February of last year. We made the move from Sausalito across the bay primarily because of the larger lot sizes and, um, and the greater privacy. And, um, I can tell you as a family, we were sick to our stomach when we, uh, saw the poles go up. You know, it's, um, very much imposing from our primary living space, um, from the living room, from, we have two balconies, two large balconies, um, the balcony that comes off the living room. There's a balcony that comes off the master bedroom. And from both of those, now we see poles in our faces. The house is, um, five bedrooms, three of which are towards the back. This doesn't impact, um, which is okay. From the backyard, we see some poles and things, and I think that's, that's perfectly okay as well. Uh, it's really that north side. If, if there's a top view of the property, if you look at, it's really where it's closest to the property line. Happens to be our view direction towards both the water and San Francisco. So, um, now we see poles. I won't say that it's hundred percent obstructing the view, but all of a sudden, um, you know, uh, we, we see this addition that's gonna go up. And I can see what's happening here partially is because, um, their property sits closer to the street, so it's, it's sitting kind of in front of ours. And it's exactly in the direction of our view. So by virtue of, um, them coming forward, and I can appreciate, they tried to balance it out, but they, they came forward a little bit and they went up a little bit. And both of those, um, you know, uh, uh, obstructs, um, our privacy and our view. And I can also see that it might impact them less because as they've designed it, uh, I think cleverly, they haven't put any windows there. So they're looking, you know, in the same direction towards the view. They don't see us as much or any, but we see them. So we, we're gonna see their, their, their new, um, uh, balcony and deck. And we're gonna just see the house all of a sudden. We also see the house from our driveway. When you come up, all of a sudden it, it, it dominates. We don't even see our own house. We see their house with, with all the poles and so forth. So, you know, I don't wanna sound too, too negative. Uh, I, I, I think we can be good neighbors. I, I'm, I'm excited to, to, to work, work with them and, and, and make it, make it work. I understand they wanna make an addition for their family, but, you know, uh, I think, um, we have, um.
We're, we're, yeah, we're at three minutes if you could wrap up. Yeah, actually, do, do you have any photos that you've taken from the property that?
I, I'm not prepared to, to, to discuss the details unfortunately right now. I just wanted to make my case and hopefully the next round we can go there.
Okay, all right.
Thanks. Yeah, thank you very much.
Hey guys.
You just, uh, real quick, just, is anybody else that's wishing to speak on the property? And then we'll also just go online real quick. Uh, is there anybody on the Zoom call that, uh, wishes to speak on this application? If you could use the raise hand feature at the bottom of the screen?
There are no raised hands.
All right, thanks. All right, all yours.
Um, okay, so I, I, I guess I, I didn't, you know, ran out of time, so I didn't have, uh, time to talk about neighbor outreach. I, I kind of canvassed the neighborhood with, uh, like, hey, we have a project coming up, uh, so please reach out. I actually had bumped into Michael and he's doing some, um, some yard work. Um, got his number, left, left several messages saying like, hey, that, I know, I know you are the most impacted neighbor, so let's, uh, let, let's have a discussion. Um, uh, I first his, his wife Diane just called me at like four thirty this afternoon, so we, we talked through some things, um, which I had, uh, uh, let's, let's go to the last slide. I mean, I guess, um, these, I, I. I I what I was hoping to do in in leaving the messages is is have a conversation with the neighbors. Obviously, that's all always preferable, I know very well. Since we hadn't had that opportunity, I the only photos I had of of their house uh were from the MLS, which I pulled up. I I think I'll I'll note, I'll note two things, maybe you can, can you zoom in, maybe on uh we'll just kind of go through. Uh but the the top lefts, um with their 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 house uh has uh you can kind of see the relationship between the the two houses, um their their deck uh kind of, I I'd say the decks are kind of similar similar situations, uh obviously, it's the same same kind of sloped lot. If you move to the uh to the right, their house is laid out. The 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 main living areas, the kitchen, family room are on the lower level. The master suite is uh is is on the second floor, and then there's a another bedroom uh on the on the upper floor. As let's go to the next, I mean, as as you know, the 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 view ordinances is from from primary live in space, li- living spaces, which uh as I understand the definition would be kitchen, living room, which is uh squarely out to the uh out to the bay. You you the there's there's some shrubs here, I I I did talk to to Michael's wife uh shortly before the meeting and we're very happy to to address any any screening concerns from from this deck, we had talked about doing some uh some planting, figuring out something that uh that was in in agreement, or if there's glazing issues on the north side to uh work with them to frost windows or or do some raised uh raised sill heights. Um let's let's go um down one. So this is um yeah, maybe halfway. So I mean, I guess the the maybe we'll, so that's the master bedroom uh is the center image there, so I I mean, you can't even see Keith and Chloe's. Obviously, I I I don't have a way to show the story poles because I I only have these images. The master bedroom deck uh viewed there, I I don't think I don't think you would see drastically the story poles, uh again, I I haven't been there, I I I offered to try to go. Uh but I I feel like I feel like there is a massive amount of view not being impacted by uh by our projects. And the uh if you go down, the the upper bedroom is, I don't think it can be considered a uh a primary bedroom. You can on that last image to the uh to the right there, you can actually see Keith and Chloe's house from the side window, which obviously would not be, so you can see the slopes. Uh the slope of the of the master, oh sorry, of the living room there. And yes, the story poles would be visible from the side window, but if you go to the image to the right, that's that's the view even from i- if this was the master bedroom, which uh it's my opinion that this is this is this can't be considered a primary space, so we're happy to work with uh with the um the owners on on, you know, screening and figuring out a way to uh to come up with 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 privacy. Uh you know, address any privacy concerns, but uh um I think uh I I I we did our best to reach out to neighbors, our two neighbors across the street uh are in support. A couple of the neighbors in the in the uh in the neighborhood who obviously are not admittedly not as impacted as the uh as the neighbors at two forty, but um uh yeah, I guess uh that's that's all I'll say, I don't know if you have questions.
All right, any uh any questions for the architect? All right, thanks, all right, with that, we'll uh close the public portion of the hearing and bring it back to the board. Uh would anybody like to lead us off?
Um this is a really complex remodeling job on a very tough site and I can see the the way that you developed it, it was developed by the architect was was probably the easiest way to do the do the project. Unfortunately, it does really impact the adjacent neighbors' view of San Francisco and and that's sort of the key part of their panoramic view. All these houses have close to a hundred and eighty degrees, but the city is over here and Richardson Day is over there. I think it would be possible to take the two bedrooms that were proposed for extending toward the neighbor. I'm looking now at sheet A. A two point two bedroom two and bedroom three could have been bridged across to the uphill side without extending it, pushing it toward the neighbor, that would help in this in this uh effect and in this consideration with the neighbor. The the bulkiness and massiveness of this house is by putting the additions where they're being put is is pushing the building downhill and it looks even more vertical and more more uh up the hill rather than trying to terrace back into the hill. The rest of the project doesn't seem to affect the neighbors, it's those two bedrooms on the end that are the problem. And I'd certainly like to see the house mass reduced rather than enlarge the way it's proposed. There's a an unfortunate part of this is that you have one of the great uh geologic outcroppings I've seen in Tiburon on the uphill portion of your lot. It's you have pillow lava and serpentine that is classic California, classic Tiburon. And I hope you don't invade that portion of the lot anymore. I'd even consider moving the solar panels that you were going to propose in that area some someplace.
I actually, I don't think we were able to comment on this location of solar panels.
Um well, okay, I just did, so.
Just to keep it keep, just to keep us out of legal problems.
Other than that, I think it's it's an ingenious design, I like the fountain, I I like the collection of the water. Uh that whole hillside above you is is draining onto your lot, and that's going to be a continuing problem, but I think you've solved it well and and uh I I'd rather see less building out on the downhill. I think the deck on the downhill side is oversized, you don't you you don't usually use decks nearly as much as we think. Uh you can keep it that big, but it's uh it it's more deck than is necessary, and it extends all the way across the front of the house. That's it for the moment.
Alex.
Yeah, it's a little, I I didn't see the, or did you see the views from the neighbor, I was unable to see them. I I I think prior to that feedback, since it's the first we're hearing of it and I, we haven't seen pictures, it's a little hard to comment on. I I don't have an, I can't have an opinion on the view blockage until we see something, so that's something we'll have to discuss. Um I I I think, you know, prior to that comment, I think the design, it it's when I looked at the design, when I looked at the floor plan, and then I saw and and the site and then seeing how, you know, they were under lot coverage and they were under FAR, I was I was very impressed with that. And I I think we really liked seeing that because typically on a on a site like this, um you really see lot coverage variances because you you have to, and I I um, you know, I I think I applaud the design of such a functional floor plan um that I think is really smart in a in a way that's not, you know, completely ripping up the 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 site and and doing a ton of massive grading, so I I I really like that. The deck, my comment on the deck is, i- it's a big deck, but it's the i- it's it's primary outdoor space and the only way to use that outdoor space. Um it slopes, it's their front yard, it's the only kind of level, it's the only outdoor opportunity off their living room really. So, you know, you you only have a couple options of how to um utilize the outdoor space, and I think the deck is the the smart way to to go versus, you know, building a what, like a seven, eight foot retaining wall I'm filling in for a for a yard, I I I think the deck is is um, I can find the variance, um make the findings for the the front yard um setback variance, um just because of the unusual circumstances and the the um ability to utilize some actual outdoor space on that on the area. I I I think for me, the the view blockage is just unknown, so um it's it's a a tricky situation. I I'd be interested to hear what i- if others have seen seen any of it or it's the first we're hearing and how we should approach that.
Thanks, Alex.
Um I visited the property today and um I actually saw that there was going to be a view with view issue, but I I was lazy, so I was going to crawl over there because I could see that I could see the deck, so I was like, I wonder how this is all going to work out. Then um I ran out of energy, so that I I could see it from the from the house itself that there is going to be some kind of impact. I don't know what to say, I think this is a nice design and it's unfortunate that this came at the last minute and I don't have any guidance as to how it would change, but I think it needs to be taken into consideration of the impacts to the next door neighbor. And I like how it consolidates things because when I was going there, I was jumping over, sorry, fences, kitty fences and stuff. It's it's a challenging sight.
Thanks.
Yeah, I I think we're all saying the same thing, there's an obvious obstruction with the neighbor, it sounds like it's a more of a newly identified problem, but as you stated, it's best if you start to work that out uh and have this re-presented. I personally also don't have any problem with the large deck size, I've realized that's how you're using your yard, it's actually what your neighbors do as well, and I think you have to uh give uh agree on that variance, but this um sort of newly identified problem would be, I think, addressed by taking care of that that corner that they're uh describing where the two bedrooms are. I think that has to be um brought back to us about what what's the best solution that you the two of you came up with.
All right, um yeah, so I also, I went out to the site this morning, it was a little bit foggy, so it was also kind of hard to interpret exactly where like the wh- what view would be had. Um and I think often we interpret, um you know, it sounds like the the neighbors are new to the process, uh but we often, I I think err on the side of like interpreting no letter asks uh approval, right? Uh you know, if no one writes in a letter or calls in staff and then staff directs them to write a letter, something like that, or we don't get a a late mail about a project, then we were like, okay, that's supportive, and I I kind of got out to the site and and was surprised that there hadn't been, you know, something written by by two forty. Um but I, you know, just kind of had looked at it, you know, again, from from Google Earth and just, you know, it's pretty clear that there is you know, it's almost no way from two forty to look at the city without essentially looking across that area. Um you know, the the size of the deck, I also doesn't bother me because I don't think, at least, you know, the view impact is the biggest concern and the the hot doorknob says that's probably the sunny area that they want to be hanging out on. Um so uh yeah, I I I think that that I I'm probably, it sounds like we're all in a similar place of a continuance, um and also, I I think uh an invitation from uh the neighbor to be able to view the story poles and, you know, potentially uh, you know, work with uh the architect uh to be able to 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 document kind of like, hey, is there a a design? As far as the design goes, I I I love the design, I think it's a absolutely gorgeous design, appreciate anybody that tries to work with an existing foundation versus just scraping everything and starting from scratch. Uh it seems like it's it's smart both from a just a remodel standpoint, but also, like I said, I I think the the materials and um everything like that uh really works. So the only concern I have is like, well, you know, quantifying what the impact is for for the neighbor. So.
Like to make a motion to to you, but I don't understand what the options are.
So I think, and this would be something that you, if we could ask the architect and the applicants quickly, only open the hearing for that to find out whether they would be available like uh November seventh is probably the earliest we could get them on the docket.
Okay, November seventh.
And with that, and I wanted you to ask.
Yeah, it was so so uh we're going to reopen the hearing just simply to ask uh for a date of clarification, so uh motion to reopen the hearing, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, none, all right. Uh so I guess we're looking at.
Uh yeah, if if November seventh is the is the next available date that we could get on. Um we'll um I hope that the neighbors will be open to us coming over there and but, you know, vice versa, that's the that's the uh desired, that that was the desired conversation to have, to be clear, but uh but yeah, November seventh works.
Yeah, and and again, I I'll th- thank you, so uh reflozing it back from the public, I I would just say like, I I really would encourage the uh the neighbor to, you know, either provide either photographs or some ability to kind of uh view and and figure out kind of what the impact is um as part of uh either this current design or a potential redesign.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, unfortunately, we, yeah, unfortunately, we we closed it, um but right afterwards, you could uh ask staff. Yeah, sure. Um all right, so it sounds like.
Two weeks, I just wanted to clarify one thing, story polls a minimum two weeks before the uh.
Yeah, which I think knows that November seventh, we don't we wouldn't have any problems with it. All right, so uh a motion.
Like to make a motion to continue it to the November seventh hearing.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Uh all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, and with that, the uh project for three, uh two thirty eight Round Hill continues to the November seventh designer review board meeting. And we move on to the uh, thank you, uh move on to the final application on this uh evening's agenda, which is PH four fifty two Mercury Avenue. All right.
Hi, I'm Clark Jorgensen, um resident owner of E two Mercury, uh my wi- with my wife Angela. Needles attack here tonight. Um we've owned the property since two thousand and seven, have raised three kids there, uh one's moved on to college, so there's four of us now. And uh we've been thinking about this remodel for some time and looking forward to progressing. Thank you.
Feel like I should have maybe changed in the bathroom or something, but uh hello, I'm Cedric Berger, I'm I work on different projects with different clients and this is a very different project than uh the previous one. Uh the Yorgitsons, uh as Clark said, have been in the house for nearly twenty years. I've been thinking about uh what what needs to happen to to bring it to modern standards, they uh I think the their kids are all around somewhere between six, six and six, eight, so they're they're a they're a large family. Uh and uh that that drove part of the decisions to raise the whole plate heights to nine feet and and bring the project to uh kind of a little more um uh taller stature, so obviously um let's go to the next next slide. Um you know, I guess we can, we can skip over uh this one, so neighborhood, I'm sure you guys are familiar with the neighborhood. Uh mostly single, single story homes. Uh this is somewhat unique because it's one of the few uh uh houses in the neighborhood that has a a pool, there's maybe three or four. Um it was built before the Yorgitsons owned the property, uh it's a pool that they use. Um it was built before the Yorgitsons owned the property. Uh it's a pool that they use and enjoy. And um it's uh the property is kind of unique. Because it it also has this big uh pitasperm hedge at the at the street. So uh next slide. Um so here's the the survey, uh which doesn't really have the, I guess you do have the the hedge up there. So a lot of these um, a lot of these property lines are are set back quite a ways. Um a couple of things that uh we realize is there's, so the garage had been converted. Uh and there's really only one parking spot off street, which is not compliant with current code. Uh you see the uh the pool there, which takes up really the majority of. The potential rear uh rear expansion possibility, which uh led us down the the road to. Request the side yard variance. Um you can see a little bit the the existing, so. Uh east is to the right, west is to the left on this uh the survey. Um you have about thirteen feet of space to the uh east. And the that bottom corner of the house towards the pool uh on the west side is right at eight feet. So it's it's kind of, it's kind of at the uh at at the setback there. Next slide. Uh existing house fairly fairly standard of a lot of these uh houses in Belron and some other neighborhoods. That have been added on to over the years, still has essentially the original kitchen. Uh there'd been a master suite uh bump out towards the front and the uh the garage. Uh at some point before the Yorgitsons uh bought the house has has been converted to family room. Um next slide. Uh that's just the existing uh roof plan, a couple skylights. Um so here's. Here's a rendering of of our proposed design. Even though it's considered a new house because of the demo calculations, it it we really wanted to keep as much of the existing foundation as possible. Uh three bedrooms, three bathrooms uh with a powder room and a little uh small uh zoom room. Uh with a flex room that could be converted into a bedroom when needed. Uh open concept, living, dining, kitchen. Uh the master suite moved to the back of the house, a little more private. Um raising all the plate heights to nine feet um became part of the project as we. Developed it and the the central portion uh basically what you see in the rendering that the raised portion of. Uh which is the living room uh is raised to ten foot plate height. So there's li- little little bigger ceilings there. Uh and they wanted to be able to get two cars off the street uh in the driveway. Uh and then really just going going uh, you know, very environmentally conscious on the on the design and, you know, maximizing the. Uh um the 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 solar is gonna be required. We're gonna have to do tier one uh uh title twenty four is a new house. Um so we'll go heat pump, electric uh and cooling and uh, you know, full solar with the battery backup. Uh next slide. Uh these are essentially just the F A R numbers. We're under the allowable. Because mainly because of the the garage uh situation. So we're, we went from seventeen seventy nine square feet to twenty four eighty three. Um so we're un- under the allowable there, especially when you consider that technically we're allowed to add a garage as well. Uh lock coverage, we're at that same twenty four eighty three, uh which is thirty three point one percent where thirty five percent is allowed. Um the height goes from thirteen six on the current ridge to uh fifteen foot nine, which is. Two foot three uh uh increase and um the setbacks. The setbacks that are changing, we're actually reducing the rear yard setback. Or I guess increasing it. Uh and then the the front goes from uh seventeen feet to fifteen ones. Or a reduction of just under two feet. Uh and then the east side, uh which is the left side looking at the house. Uh that's where we're doing the majority of the extension and requesting the variance for uh a five foot five. Uh foot uh side yard setback where eight feet is required. Um next slide. Uh site plan, really the the majority of the rear, which is already nicely landscaped. And 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 to the client's uh likes, uh not touching it. Uh there's significant. Uh screening on either kind of front uh front areas here on on the both on the neighboring side here and here. Uh so we're really just opening up this hedge, uh creating a more kind of uh pleasant entry from. From the street, widening this uh the driveway to be able to get two cars there and really. A a turf lawn and kind of low maintenance and and native and. Uh we'll get a little little deeper into that um in subsequent slides. Next slide. Uh floor plan, uh this, you can see the dashed line of the existing house here. Uh so here where this gable, so these two gables are essentially extensions of the existing gable. With the exception of being raised to a nine foot plate height. Uh but really just pulling, pulling forward to make a a uh a nice family room that's, you know, closable and convertible into a bedroom. Uh a little, so this is the kind of original volume, uh original ridge. Original wall here, pulling that forward. The the this this whole area gets pulled forward to create a nice, you know, living room, dining room essentially stays where it is. This portion is the area that will get the ten foot plate height and then open to uh a nice big, big new kitchen. Down a bedroom hallway, which gives us access to uh the two relatively modest bedrooms. These are like. Uh you know, twelve by, I think this one's a little under twelve by fourteen. And this is kind of a uh twelve by twelve, I believe. Master suite as well, not not a massive master suite. Um you know, we 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 really, we feel like this variance is required to get the. The necessary spaces. This is, this is not a five foot wide hallway. It's like three foot three. Uh little bit uh la- laundry room kind of in between uh in between these two bedroom suites and then. Kind of a modest master, master bathroom and closet uh that all open up to the backyard. Uh next slide. Roof plan. This thi- this is essentially the same location as the existing ridge. This is the portion that gets popped up. Uh some new skylights in this uh main living room, uh a couple skylights scattered in key locations. Uh just to bring some light into bathroom hallway and laundry room. And then uh three skylights over the island in the kitchen. Uh next slide. Uh so this is the the renderings kind of uh, you know, they're uh more traditional. Uh east coast desires. So we're uh doing black windows with um with. Uh kind of an off off white, like of a light gray um shingle siding, uh charcoal gray roof. Uh next slide, we'll get into our uh other materials, um kind of some lantern. Lantern style uh downlights. Uh and um the the side fences will be kind of a a horizontal um horizontal. Uh cedar design, the the other, the other fences around the the rear yard will all be remaining. Uh so black windows, a colored front door and then kind of nice, you know, muted tones. Uh on the white, white trim, kind of a light gray uh main, main cedar stain. Uh on the shingles uh and black windows. Uh next slide. So elevations, this is the elevation on the west side. So facing uh you know, on the left, left side of uh the site plan, really just a a mudroom door. And then this is the dining room bump out that's a little further uh further beyond. Uh you see that little bit of the bump up of that of that living room roof. Uh next slide. Uh front elevation, so this wall is right at the front setback. So we're, this is to get a little more usable space in that bedroom. We're doing a bay, which is allowable to extend into the. Uh setback, this is setback and it complies with with the setback. Uh so kind of just creating a nice, nice central uh central prominent entryway. Um not kind of the entryway that's to the side, which seems to be the case in a lot of these uh these uh Belron East and. Uh Bel Air Homes. And then this is, this is the required setback. This is where we're bumping a little bit into that uh side yard setback to create this this bedroom here. Uh next slide. Uh so this is the east side facing uh the neighbors really kept it. Uh low key, these are, this this gable is matching the the height uh of of this one. Which is approximately a foot higher than the existing. Uh the master bedroom gable uh is a little bit. Uh slightly lower than that. This is the dining room behind and this would be the laundry room. Next slide. Uh facing, facing the pool, we have a bit of an extended overhang over over this portion of roof, taking advantage of that. Uh uh raised um raised ceiling height here or raised plate height. This is the kitchen here with a glazed door uh coming, you know, providing access to the the pool area backyard. This is the bathroom, uh the primary bathroom and primary uh shower. Uh and then this is the primary bedroom here. Uh next slide. Uh sections uh kind of down the, down the this fine of the house. This shows the slightly lower uh gable height in the primary bedroom. This uh thi- this will be kind of beams crossing uh separating the uh the. Uh kitchen here and the the living room, uh dining room. Uh in section this way, you have your skylights and this is kind of a section through that that. That little zoom room where it switches to a low slope roof. Um next slide, I mean just a couple, next slide. We'll keep on going. Uh so landscape wise, again, we're not not touching anything in in the back. Uh the current fences right aligns with the house, so we're gonna be bumping it forward to create. A uh more usual hidden uh garbage area, really going pretty simple and native with some grasses. A little bit of uh, a little bit of uh flowering shrubs in the front here. Uh again, turf here and just some boxwood on either side uh of uh this pitasperm hedge, which will open up. And uh uh we talked to a lot of the neighbors, um you know, that. Obviously, there technically is an option to add a second story, but uh this is. Um I would just say the Yorgitsons were uh being eighteen years in this house, were not in in a mindset. To start a war and a long process. And um so we we have, we have approval from all the direct neighbors across the street. Here, this neighbor uh and the neighbor at uh fifty six, which is the most affected by the variances. Uh very in support of the project. So um I feel like uh as far as the variance, it really, the. The location of the pool is 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 a special circumstance that 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 really eliminates. Most of our ability, the 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 house is currently as far back as it could possibly go. So um so we're actually. Reducing that a little bit just by taking that uh that uh octagonal bay out and um. I I I hope you guys can make the uh the variance findings. Uh I think that's uh, that's probably it.
All right, thank you. Is there any questions for the architect while we open it to the public?
I did real quick. I still, I think I missed the uh size of the variance. What what was it on the yard?
Uh it's a a, so it's a uh uh eight feet is required and we're requesting five foot five, so so two foot seven.
All right, any other questions? Nope. All right, uh with that, we will open it up to the public. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this? Seeing nobody here, let's go to the Zoom call. If you're on the Zoom call, please use the raise hand feature to.
There are no hands, right?
Speak, all right. Um with that, you have additional five minutes if you like.
Uh I'll I'll just say that the the, I feel like the the Yorgitsons are um, you know. Upstanding members of the community and and I I think their their desires to to stay and age in this house. And it this, this project really just brings it up to uh, it's still a relatively modest standard. But uh it's just a standard that's that's a a longer term uh solution for them. So um I think the. I know variances are are sometimes tricky, but I I I feel strongly that the findings can be. Uh made in this case and I uh hope you do too.
All right, thank you very much. Uh with that, we'll close the public portion of the hearing and bring it back to the board. Anybody like to lead us off?
I I think this is a very clever floor plan remodeling uh. These early Tiburon houses have. Half a dozen sort of standard ways that people have added on to them, but this one is is a little you, little unique. In that it's almost a Palladian uh villa look from the front with its symmetry and center, center entry. The pool does created a hardship in going into the backyard and. This neighborhood is known for not wanting to have second stories, so I think it's, those two items for me make. Make it. Uh possible to make the findings for variance on the side yard setback of two point, two feet seven or whatever it is. So I I could approve this as it as it as it stands.
All right. Work from the left to the right.
Fine, other than getting rid of the pool, I don't know how else you deal with that. And that seems like a very logical solution, very nice plan.
You could open the doors in the backyard and jump right into the pool. I think I can support this plan. I think it's a great plan.
Yeah, I agree. It's great of time. Can make the findings for variance. It's a good plan.
All right, yeah, I I'm, I appreciate the applicant not using the designer view board as a battleground for a two story in Belveron. Uh which um has taken many an evening very late as uh the neighborhood clearly uh is. For the most part, on the inner part of the neighborhood, anti-two stories. So uh thank you for that. I think the 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 uh. Design is 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 a lovely design. I think it fits great with the neighborhood um and uh fully support it and can also make the findings for the variance. So it sounds like we're all in the same place to look at a motion. Anyone wanna? Make a motion?
Motion to accept the variance.
Oh, I think we'd be looking for a motion to uh adopt the resolution. We have, we have a draft resolution, right?
We have a draft solution that it's exempt from SEQA and that you can make the variance findings.
Okay, can I just say that, please?
You can.
So to adopt the.
To adopt the resolution.
Resolution to to accept the variance of this.
Uh you can make the variance findings.
Make the variance findings.
I I have to look at the resolution, approve the design review and that the project is exempt from SEQA. You can just use those words. We'll, we'll give you a a pass at this late hour.
Thank you very much.
All right, we have a second on that motion. All in favor?
I.
I.
Opposed?
And no, oh, no, sorry. It is too late and I have a six, I have a six week old.
Can we redo that vote? Just make sure. All those in favor?
I.
Okay, that's unanimous, I. All those opposed, there are no opposed. All right, thank you. Uh and with that, uh I'll just double check, make sure there's nothing stuck at the end of, up, there we go, and we return. Thank you.